Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our March 25 Bellevue City Council regular city council meeting. And it just happens to be council members on's last meeting, but we'll talk about that later. Before we start, I want to talk about somebody we lost on Friday. Absolute hero in the affordable housing world, former Washington State Representative and House Speaker Frank Chopp passed away on Friday. And he was just a titan for affordable housing, a champion for working families. He helped our city get, I think, a million dollars from the state to purchase Highland Village with King County Housing Authority and retain that housing for an entire community of Bellevue School District families. He also created Apple Health for Kids, which provides free and local health care to children. He was, he just retired, I think, at the end of last year, and he was still working last week on legislation and fighting for housing inequity. And I just, I know we all admired him very well. He was a champion, he was an advocate, and he was a friend to many of us. So I just want to talk about him tonight. Let's see, let's do the roll call.
Mayor Robinson?
Here.
Speaker Malick Tan?
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen-House?
Here.
Councilmember Stokes?
Here.
And Councilmember Zahn?
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen-House, could you lead us in the flag salute, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have a proclamation and a commendation after that. The first one is a Sexual Assault Awareness Month proclamation read by Councilmember Hamilton.
Whereas sexual assault remains a pervasive issue with incidents occurring every 68 seconds in the United States per the Rape Abuse and Incest National Network, and whereas Black, Indigenous, and other people of color, people living in poverty, LGBTQ plus individuals, non-binary people, elders, people with disabilities, and others who have been historically oppressed or disproportionately affected by sexual violence in significant and complex ways, and whereas, according to the Bellevue Police Department, there were 23 sexual assault incidents reported to the agency in 2024, and whereas, however rape remains one of the most underreported crimes, survivors often face fear of disbelief or further trauma, while additional barriers such as language, immigration status, gender bias, and systemic racism create further obstacles. And whereas, the negative impacts of sexual violence, trauma on adults, youth, and children include fear, concerns for safety, and physical and mental health conditions, including symptoms of post-traumatic stress disorder, injury, and missed work or school, and whereas, King County is home to many organizations that provide culturally and linguistically specific services for survivors of sexual assault. These services are critical in effectively responding to survivors' unique needs, and whereas preventing and addressing the trauma of sexual violence requires a united community effort. By ensuring supportive resources for all and challenging harmful attitudes and behaviors, we can create lasting change. Now, therefore, I, Dave Hamilton, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of Bellevue, Washington, on behalf of the city council, join advocates and communities throughout King County in taking action to prevent sexual violence by standing with survivors and proclaiming April 25th as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Bellevue, and we commit to a future where all members of our community, children, youth, and adults, are safe and supported.
Thank you, Councilmember. We have Erin Howshar, a board member of CASEARC, and Karen Sharp, staff member of CASEARC, here tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Hamilton, and thank you all so very, very much. As Mayor Robinson said, my name is Karen. I am the Chief Operating Officer at King County Sexual Assault Resource Center, a nonprofit organization that serves Bellevue and all cities and communities within King County. And I'm joined by Erin, one of our wonderful board members who works right here in Bellevue to accept the proclamation.
Thank you, Karen. I'm here to accept this proclamation on behalf of our organization, and I want to say thank you for being a part of the solution to sexual violence. First, to the survivors in our community, I want to say, you're not alone. Unfortunately, sexual violence is all too common. Half of women and one-third of men will experience sexual violence within their lifetime. People from marginalized communities due to their disability, race, or ethnicity, or their gender or sexual identities, to name a few, are at even greater risk. Chances are that you know someone who has been sexually abused. The trauma of sexual assault is something that can affect a survivor's mental, physical, and behavioral health, their ability to form healthy relationships, and to remain in school or the workplace, and so much more. But recovery from this trauma is possible with support. CASEARC assisted 4,300 individual survivors and their family members last year alone. Almost half of CASEARC clients are teens and children. We know young people are the most vulnerable to sexual assault and the least likely to speak up and the least likely to be believed when they do. I want to end with another message to survivors. Feel free, feel free to contact CASEARC. There is free and confidential help available to you, and our resource line is a great starting point. The number is 888-99-VOTE. We always say, you can't change what you don't talk about. Thank you for your leadership and your willingness to be loud about sexual assault, and thank you to Dave Hamilton for coming to our fundraising breakfast last week. It was great to see you there. Thank you all.
Great. Let's do a picture. Okay. Okay, and now we have a commendation for Councilmember Zahn, and it's going to be read by Councilmember Stokes.
Whereas Janice Zahn has provided outstanding service to the city of Bellevue since her election to the city council in 2017, dedicating herself to fostering an inclusive, connected, and thriving community. I go back and say this is a City of Bellevue commendation. Whereas a longtime Bellevue resident, Janice has brought a deep commitment to good governance and public service, informed by her extensive professional experience in civil and cultural engineering and her leadership at the Port of Seattle. And whereas, prior to her election to the city council, Janice served on Bellevue's Transportation Commission from 2013 to 2017, where she played a key role advocating for safe and accessible transportation solutions. And whereas during her tenure on the city council, Janice has been a tireless advocate for safe and supportive neighborhoods, affordable housing, and equitable infrastructure investments that benefit all Bellevue residents. And whereas, her leadership on regional and national initiatives, including her service on several Association of Washington Cities committees, and has passed co-chair of the National League of Cities Race Equity and Leadership Council, has strengthened Bellevue's role as a leader in diversity, equity, and inclusion. And whereas she consistently brought a collaborative and thoughtful approach to high-performing government, ensuring that policies and programs reflect the needs of the community. And whereas Janice's dedication to public service has now led her to an opportunity to continue serving the people of Washington as a state legislator, well, she will undoubtedly bring the same passion, integrity, and expertise that had defined her time in Bellevue. Now, therefore, I, John Stokes, on behalf of Mayor Lynn Robinson, and on behalf of the Bellevue City Council, do, this 25th day of March in the year 2025, hereby commend Janice Zahn for her exemplary service, steadfast leadership, and commitment to making Bellevue a better place for all who live and work here. Signed by Lynn Robinson, Mayor, City of Bellevue.
Thank you. We'll just go down the dais and give everybody a chance to speak, and we'll let our city manager, Diane Carlson, speak after. So go ahead, Councilmember Nguyen-House.
Thank you so much. I can't believe the day's here already. That came really, really quickly. Janice, you're going to be very much missed, and I looked fondly when I first met Janice. And I was remembering that just recently, going through the interview process to appoint someone to our, to our council. And the first time I met Janice, I was so impressed, maybe for a different reason than what you might think, but I remember we were in the waiting room, and we were getting ready to interview, and, and I knew Janice by name, but I hadn't met her before, but there she was, and missing a tooth, and had ice up against her mouth. I mean, and I know your lip was swollen, and I was like, oh, terrible timing. But I was so impressed that it just really didn't faze you. And she wanted on to just do an incredible interview, much like our incoming council member. And I was so impressed and thought, not only were you great under fire and great, very composed, even though you were not feeling your best, but you did a great interview. I thought, wow, not only is she smart, but she's tough as well. So that was my first introduction to Janice, and you've been a great colleague, and you've served the city with distinction, and also something that, you know, I think you're going to be, remember some great legislation, great policies, and, you know, I think some of your work on the C, on the CCC, I think on the safe parking, and then obviously transportation projects as well. But I'm going to remember you most, not that you won't see me, but serving together, where we didn't always agree, but we still have great conversations, and, and we still ended up voting probably the same way, 93, 94% of the time. And I think sometimes that gets, that gets lost, but, but there was always more that united versus, you know, the opposite, so, than dividing us. So anyways, I want to wish you all the best down in Olympia. You're off to a great start in advocating for the city in a number of different ways, including getting something like, I just didn't think it was going to happen in House Bill 1980. I didn't think there was going to be enough time for that, but yet that is on a great track right now, and we might be able to have employer shuttles in our bat lanes here in Bellevue. So that is fantastic, and that just goes to how quickly and how prepared you were to go down to Olympia. So wishing you all the best and wishing you a lot of success in, in your years ahead. Again, continuing on with your tremendous public service. So thank you.
Councilmember Lee?
Thank you. Well, Janice, I want to thank you for the great work you have done. We started out as really soulmates. We have a lot of things in common, not obviously, you know, I mean, the obvious is that we come from a very similar background, and we have similar goal and objectives moving forward. And so you are a very thoughtful, meticulous engineer, project manager, so you know lots of things in and out, you know, of what makes the city work, what makes the city to get things done within realistic expectation and cost. And so we really appreciate that. And also, I think you are, you know, I would imagine have some virtue of being an Asian female. You're hardworking, you don't complain a lot, you keep at it. It's always amazing to me that you can, you can be on the city council, working more than full-time job, same time holding down your job at the port, and as a director of engineering, and also doing a great job that people recognize what you're doing. So it's not easy. That means you're really making a lot of sacrifice. And the thing is, while you're sacrificing, you have the support of your family. I think they're very well, I believe, should be recognized. Obviously, you start out with your spouse, but even more importantly, start with your mother. You know, without a family of mother support, motherly love, you would not be what you are. And I think that we want to thank you all for the support that she gets and encouraging her. And also, I believe that whatever you have worked and priorities that you have accumulated experience from the city of Bellevue will serve you extremely well at the state level, because I already noticed that things that involve you sometimes takes years to happen. You make it happen. The first day you got a job, you already have a proclamation made, right? And now you can keep all the bills you're coming through. And that, not just any bill, but they're thoughtful bills. They are bills that you continue to have the people in the region, people in the city that you, where you live, keep that in mind. So I think we will be well-served. I hope you can continue to remember us, continue to see the bigger picture, but more importantly, to serve your local community as well as you have done in the last many, many years. So we're looking forward to it, and congratulations, and we'll definitely be looking forward to working with you very closely. Thanks, Janice.
Councilmember Stokes?
Well, first, everything I said and read in the commendation fits very well. And I remember early on when you were on council, getting a call one night, 11 o'clock, and we think we had a few of those conversations, and it was something you were concerned about, something you wanted to work on. And we talked for a long time, and you talked it through, and you, that's the way you work with things. You really get out there and find somebody or work on something, and then we come away with something that we both see going forward. And I think that's a skill you have of really, one, you will go up and talk to people about, what do you think about this? How do we do that? And that's very important in this kind of role here and in the legislature. And when I first heard about you being, going to the legislature, my first thought was, she did a great job here, she needed to be here, or she, it fits in here, but this job you're going to now is the one that is, you're really, really cut out for. And the good thing is, and really appreciate that, is you had the experience working with the city, working with council members, working with the people in the community. And that gives you, I think, a big leg up on a lot of people going to legislature who don't have that experience. And so you're going to be an amazing legislator, and all I can say is, let's keep working together and come back and talk to us, and, you know, we're here to help you on things. When things come up, we can give you some perspectives, and, because we're interested in what you're doing and how it comes out. But we're here for you, and just, as, everything I've read on here just fits to a T. And so just, good luck to you, and come see us and talk to us anytime you want to, and work together. Thank you.
I feel kind of emotional. You and I have worked together a long time. Ah, I'm really happy for you. I'm really happy to see you accede to this incredible level of governance and to see you doing such a good job. You know, I've watched you testify, I've watched you explain things to people, I've watched you advocate, and it's just, you really are in your niche, and you're doing an excellent job, and I'm just really happy to see you there. You know, you're in a seat that has traditionally held very strong women. We had Claudia Balducci in your seat, we had Vanda de Slatter, and then you, and now we have Claire Suma-Dewiria taking the seat, and it's a wonderful tradition, and you have been a wonderful example of how strong a council member can be in that seat. When I think of words to describe you, I think, smart, tough, effective, and capable. And the thing I've always admired most about you is you've really been able to have a strong career and been a wonderful mother. Your children are terrific. So congratulations.
Yes.
Deputy to Mayor?
Always need a permission, Mayor. Congratulations. Unfortunately, I was not privileged enough, like others, to serve with you for years and years. We had just one year and two months. I admire the way that you manage complex policies. I was in awe when I joined, or even before as a planning commissioner, watching you. Your brain works amazingly with managing these complex policies and technical issues. The way that you approach with your engineering lens, solving problems, that's always, I admire that. And your strong care for the community, that was the lens you always had, and I always, and that brought something to our council that I very, very appreciate, and hopefully the person that we appoint to your seat does the same thing and bring that community lens that we really need at this council. Wish you all the luck, although you don't need it. You are, when the mayor and I visited you, you were, I think, one month in, you looked like a pro. You looked like that you have been there forever, and we were just following you around, and we were just telling you what we wanted to tell you, and you were asking great questions. So good, wish you all the luck, and hopefully we collaborate very soon on some topics together. Thank you so much for everything you have done for our city.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Just want to thank you for all of your leadership in the community. I know you've been active here for a long time, and you have really thoughtfully and effectively supported a wide range of important community efforts. I think I'll never forget the first time I was in the same room as you were, and this was a campaign event, and it was going along great, and, you know, someone was up extolling your virtues and just really kind of making the case for you. And I don't know what was going through your head, but as I looked at you, it, you didn't look, you looked like, as much as anything, you were enduring hearing this. You weren't relishing. It seemed like you were ready to get to work in that moment, and I just thought, this is someone who's unique, this is someone who is really about the work. And I'll never forget just being there and experiencing you like that for the first time. I think your impact on this body and on the running of the city has been really, really critical, and it will last beyond your time here, that's for sure. I was really glad to go down and speak on your behalf at the county. I thought the idea of you moving to the legislature was a great idea. And when I was there, one of the things that I said was that more than once, her natural curiosity, open-mindedness, and constant pursuit of understanding has encouraged me to ask more questions, consider a wider range of possibilities, and engage with a wide range of stakeholders and information sources. So I just really appreciate, you know, my relationship with you. I think you've helped me be a better person, a better elected, and I think that you've made Bellevue a better place and will continue to do so in your new role, which I completely agree that you are just ideally suited for. So just wish you all the best, and, you know, you have a new gig, but we're all still working together, and I'm looking forward to that.
Diane, go ahead.
Thank you. If you can take a little more.
Councilmember Zahn, on behalf of the city staff, I want to thank you for your devotion of time and energy to the city for all these years, and acknowledge that you have been really a tireless advocate for residents and all part of the community. And you've met people where they are, and you brought their issues and their interests to the city staff and to the council. You've also brought many new ideas and passion and expertise. You acted with great curiosity and also great respect with the staff, and that's really valued, so we appreciate you for that. As Ben mentioned, that you brought and championed many new programs and ideas, and you were a force in ensuring that those things stayed at the top of our list of issues to address. That included the Adopt a Street program, the Safe Parking program that was already mentioned. And you also have been such a strong advocate for our DEI programs, our coordinating communities of color, our CCC program, and our Diversity Advantage program. So again, thank you. I think we also, on the staff side, agree that it is wonderful to see you in Olympia, representing the city, coming to Olympia or going to Olympia with such great experience from the council, and we're going to be very fortunate that you're representing us there. So this is a very tiny token of thanks from the city, two tiny tokens of thanks from the city for your time, but on behalf of the council and the staff, we are pleased to present to you your City of Bellevue branded glassy baby. Hopefully, you don't have one yet, but, okay. And very rare, very, very rare, your street sign, which I'm sure the family is happy to receive as well.
Do you want to go down and?
They get longer and longer.
Well, I think, Janice? Janice, let's, let's give you a chance to speak, and then we'll all come down and do a picture.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, first of all, I, I'm a little bit speechless with gratitude for all of the comments that you guys made. For those that are not aware, and my husband knows this very well, I am an introvert. However, this city and being able to serve the community has turned me into an extrovert that's about showing up in community, figuring out how we come together and make the city even better. So I am really so deeply honored to have had the chance to do that, because I will say that I didn't realize that that was in me until I stepped into this role. And yes, as Jared said, the very first time I pursued this role, I literally had tripped and broken my, actually, three front teeth, but I thought it was only one. And I remember coming out of that interview and telling my husband, I think I need to go to the emergency room now. But just, you know, sometimes things show up, and we pick ourselves up, and we keep going, and I'm just really thankful to have had that opportunity to do that. And I would say, as an engineer who, when I was in grad school, I was told I had very eclectic tastes, and it was not necessarily a compliment, I really appreciate your willingness to indulge my curiosity and the, hey, here's an idea, what do you guys think about this, that, or the other thing? And I'm sure that there were many times where you were just like, oh, no, not another thing. I just really appreciate the willingness to say, well, let's, let's check it out. What do we think about that? And I would say that the one that's going to be the most memorable to me is the Safe Parking program, where, you know, when I came with this idea, oh my gosh, you, the staff, you made it so much more powerful and impactful for the community, much more than I thought when I first said, hey, I've checked out Vancouver and this other city, and they have the Safe Parking program, what do we think about doing that? And that's what I bring to Olympia is the, the, the thinking about the yes and. And that's what I bring to Olympia is the, the, the thinking about the yes and let's figure out how to do it the best that we can. And I will say that, you know, Jared, I think that much more than, than our shared love of picking up litter is that time that we, I see you out in community. And really that shared love of community is something that I will bring with me. And then Conrad, you're right. You know, my dad came from China to Hong Kong and then we immigrated, so very similar immigrant story. And I so appreciate your continual push for the cross-cultural center. And I really look forward to being able to be here and celebrate that ribbon cutting and finding ways to support that with funding because I think that as we become even more multicultural, the idea, the concept of having a space to come together is even more important. So thank you for that. And then John, you're right. I, I do remember calling you at really odd times and you didn't see this, but I would be pacing around the house while we were having those conversations. And you know, because sometimes the things we work on is really hard and being able to have that thought partner is important. And then Lynn, you know, what I think of the most is how you led us through COVID. I, I don't know how many were aware that as an engineer, I thought, what a, what an interesting learning. Why don't I get on the board of health? And I started in January of 2020 and served three years during COVID and remember how hard it was to do that. I mean, we can look back and say that was five years ago and yet none of us came onto the council thinking that we were going to lead during a pandemic. And certainly that was what you faced was right stepping into your role and then being faced with COVID and how we actually survive and make sure that our, our city has the resources to keep things going. So thank you for that. And Mo, you know, you're right. We did not get to spend a lot of time together on council. What I will remember the most is how you, you talk about being data-driven. And the thing I love the most, because I'm very much like this, is, and what was our lessons learned from whatever policy issue we were working on? Because I think that those are really important things to bring to the council and so I appreciate that and continuing to learn from you as well. And then Dave, you know, I, what I think the most about you is the fact that you're always prepared. I know at every meeting, I don't know if people can see, but he's got his pad with all of his notes in there and I see you checking off the, each of the points to make sure that we're really very thorough in all the work that we do. And I think that makes a big difference. So thank you for that. And then Diane, Joe, Genesi, Charmaine, Jacque, I mean, Nathan. At the end of the day, I know that we talk a lot about elected officials, we're the face of the, of the city, but being a 20-year staffer at the port, I know that it's the staff that does that really nitty gritty work of making sure that things work and make us look good. So I really thank you for all of that work. You know, when we first got on the council, Amazon wasn't here, right? So all of the work to make sure that we are welcoming our largest employer and how to make sure that our roads are still moving and things are working, that is not easy. And then helping us survive COVID as well. And then lastly, actually I want to thank the community for all of the support and you know, sharing your stories with me so that we can make the policies better. But I would say my biggest thanks goes to my family because as I think Conrad talked about, I couldn't do what I do here without my family and especially Dwayne, my husband. He put up with a lot, especially during COVID where all the meetings were at home, which meant that he probably learned a lot more about the city than he wanted to in all of the meetings. And I, I think a lot about what being a really strong unit looks like and how we support each other for success. And that's very much what I think about with the city and, and my colleagues. So just thank you, thank you, thank you. And I take all of this with me to Olympia. Just remember, I'm not far away. I still represent Bellevue and I always welcome feedback and comments and ideas because in the off-session, that's what we'll be working on is what the next bills might look like. And so let's do even more for Bellevue and the community. Thanks.
Thank you. Let's go do a picture, shall we? Okay, next we have the approval of the agenda, but I believe we have an amendment.
I move to approve the agenda amended to add one study session item as item 10B titled State Legislative Session Budget Updates.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, city clerk, do we have some people signed up for oral communications?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This evening, there are four pre-registered speakers on the list. So before I start calling names, I'll go over a few of the rules that the council has in place. So oral communications is for a period of no more than 30 minutes and all topics have to relate to City of Bellevue government. People speaking to items on tonight's agenda will be called first and then if time remains, people speaking to items not on tonight's agenda will be called. In both of those categories, the presiding officer has authorization to give preference to those who have not spoken to council within the last 60 days or who will be speaking on items that will come in front of the council within the next 60 days. Each speaker is allowed up to three minutes to speak and only three speakers are allowed to speak to any one side of a particular topic. So with that, I'll call our first speaker, who is Christopher Randalls, who I believe is in person.
Evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Malakutian, council members and staff. Chris Randalls, testifying at personal capacity to express my deep appreciation of Councilmember Zahn and her service to Bellevue. Janice, you've been an incredible leader on all the issues that Bellevue cares about, but you're also just a kind, unassuming person who is good at listening and just a joy to work with. Bellevue's losses, the state gain, states gain, and I know you'll do a great job representing our region's values and priorities in Olympia because you already have. You've shown that in the last several months. Now with my professional hat on, as the Director of Complete Streets Bellevue, I wanted to highlight the letter that our organization authored in collaboration with Eastside Urbanism and Livable Kirkland to express strong support for the Rapid Ride K Line. This has been a great process of outreach and engagement with King County Metro staff and the final product is a bus line that really will improve transit for thousands of eastside riders. The K Line is in line with so many different comp plan policies and council goals around Vision Zero, environmental stewardship, mode shift. It's really a slam dunk project and we're so happy council has been supportive of it so far. Your vote tonight for the letter of support for this LPA is a fulfillment of council vision to support a more accessible and equitable Bellevue, so we urge a unanimous yes vote. And the thing about this work with, that King County Metro and Bellevue staff have done is that the core underlying principles, that we get more riders, we make transit a faster option and that we make our whole transportation system better with better transit service. These things are true even outside of the K Line. Transit should be a safe, fast, reliable and convenient option to get around Bellevue and we can make this vision a reality when we undertake work to build infrastructure that prioritizes transit throughput. Through the Transit Master Plan, staff have already identified projects that could improve speed and reliability on existing routes that already serve thousands of daily riders like the B Line, 271, 245 and more. As council begins discussions on the mid-buy and transportation resources, we strongly urge that adequate funding be allocated for both staffing for transit planning and capital costs for speed and reliability improvements. Bellevue can lead the region on planning and deploying these projects by using cost-effective tactical pilots to collect data on ridership increases and impacts to other modes than tweaking to adjust to railroad conditions. This rapid response should be coordinated by dedicated transit planning staff that work closely with KCM, the community and other Bellevue staff to prioritize deployment. Continuing the work that's been started with the TMP and allocating sufficient resources to begin making it a reality will not just affirm Bellevue's recommitment, commitment to transit. It will show the community that the city is serious about reaching the bold vision set forward in its environmental stewardship, Vision Zero and comprehensive plans. We urge your clear support of continuing this work beyond the K Line and thank you for your service to the City of Bellevue.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nicole Myers.
Greetings, councilmembers, and thank you so much, Councilmembers Zahn. I wanted to talk a little bit tonight about a principle from House Bill 1110. This is saying that there's a concept of substantially similar. It allows us to have either 100% of the middle housing density that the legislature envisioned or to choose to go with 75%. I think there would not be as much community concern about the middle housing implementation if we were going with 75 or 100 or 125%. But when I look at the maps, especially considering the expansion of Rapid Ride K, the changes in the EastLink Connections bus service, I think that we're going to be closer to 190 or 200% of what the legislature envisioned. And I think one of the ways that this ends up being much bigger than anticipated is that the legislature said we should have ADUs that are at least 1,000 square, or we allow at least 1,000 square feet and 24 feet of height. And other cities have ADU rules that roughly match that. Auburn allows ADUs between 300 and 1,000 square feet, no more than two bedrooms. Everett has ADUs up to 1,000 square feet, but allows a single floor as Bellevue is proposing. Federal Way allows ADUs up to 1,000 square feet. Kent uses the 1,000 square foot as well and not counting decks and porches. Kirkland allows 1,200 square feet, but requires the setbacks to be the same as the underlying zoning, which is a big difference from what we were proposing. Renton, I think, still has to figure out their rules. Seattle allows ADUs to be 1,000 square feet in neighborhood residential. And Tacoma allows ADUs up to 1,000 square feet that counts toward unit density. The choice of going with the larger, the height means that it might be three stories with low ceilings rather than 24 feet that allows you to have two stories of high ceilings. And I'd also like to point out that there are lots of other cities and regions where examples of middle housing policies using duplexes, triplexes, such as Minneapolis and Austin have led to great success. Both of those cities have been in the news recently for falling rent prices. It makes it more affordable for their residents. There are other places where we see policies that allow up to four complexes. Portland, Sacramento, Vermont, Salt Lake City. What the city is proposing to do with four units plus two ADUs and six units plus two ADUs goes beyond the state's expectation of the four and six units altogether. So thank you very much for your time. I hope you'll help us hew close to what the state intended with something that's substantially similar. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ed Rittenhouse.
Dear City Councilmembers, Bellevue, like all large Washington cities, is grappling with the fallout from House Bills 1110 Middle Housing and 1337 ADUs and DADUs. Bellevue can and should do better than the recent land use code amendments proposed by Bellevue staff. The increased density suggestions grossly go way above what is required under the House Bills. The LUCA appears to be an excessive approach that was written by and for land developers with minimal input from the people within the neighborhoods that will be impacted. For example, I think it is unlikely that the LUCA proposal to build up to nine DADUs on an existing housing lot was the consensus of neighborhood homeowners. The LUCA as written will not provide thoughtful infill and will be incompatible with many neighborhoods. I've been reading some information from the Municipal Research and Services Center, MRSC. They are a nonprofit organization that helps local governments across Washington state better serve their communities by providing legal and policy guidance on many topics. The couple of following paragraphs provide some MSRC guidance information on this subject that I happen to agree with. Taking steps to increase options for infill development by a local government may sound easy, but that is usually not the case. Neighborhood concerns about density, increased traffic and parking impacts are likely to be voiced. Taking a phased approach may be appropriate in some cases. For example, Tacoma has established a residential infill pilot program to test out how regulations will work for a limited number of infill development projects before deciding whether to have them apply citywide. I request that Bellevue become more well-informed on how to develop a plan that will help all residents, both the current ones and the potential new ones, with these zoning changes. You have an obligation to make good use of our land through thoughtful infill plans. The LUCA as it stands is clearly unacceptable and should be heavily reworked. Please ask for an extension from the state or if you can't meet the state deadline, just let the minimum standards kick in. Don't rush this process. Please do a better job for Bellevue neighborhoods.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Anne Rittenhouse.
I'm here today to voice my strong objections to the proposed land use code amendments that go too far above those required by the state. The City of Bellevue's comprehensive plan said we need, says that we need 35,000 housing units over 20 years. As written, LUCA does not represent the comprehensive plan. It provides for a ridiculous amount of housing that cannot be reasonably absorbed by neighborhoods or be supported by Bellevue's infrastructure to the detriment of the quality of life in Bellevue. LUCA is ignoring key elements of the middle, middle housing model ordinance. For instance, number one, walkability. The city's LUCA should stick with the requirements of 1110, which says, quote, "up to four units per lot if within one quarter mile walking distance of a major transit stop." A major transit stop is defined in 1110. This should be the default. There is no need to increase the units per lot or the walking distances. Number two, same development regulation should apply to middle housing. Quote, "The city may apply any objectiveable development regulations that are required for detached, single-family residences, including but not limited to setbacks, lock coverage, stormwater clearing and tree canopy to ensure compliance with existing ordinances intended to protect critical areas and public health and safety." Number three, the same height limits far and other standards should apply to middle housing. Middle housing, quote, "means buildings that are comparable in scale, form and character with single-family homes." So clearly the intention of the law is for middle housing to blend with existing single-family homes and be subjected to the same standards as single-family homes. Number four, LUCA should meet, not exceed, the key requirements for the DADUs. And finally, it is clear that the legislator has offered some protections to existing neighborhoods, yet these are not included in LUCA and they should be. Quote, "A city or..." Quote, "A city or county may not impose requirements for accessory dwelling units that are more restrictive than those for principal units, but the staff is allowing less restrictions." The draft of LUCAs is ignoring the safeguards put in place to make the density increases reasonable, gradual, and less detrimental to our neighborhoods. I respectfully request that the city adopt the policies that will support the minimum density increases and the maximum protections for our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the end of our preregistered list, so at this point, I would ask if there is anyone else joining us tonight in council chambers or online. If you would like to speak to the council, please raise your hand. I will say that that was three speakers in opposition to middle housing, so we can't take any more middle housing opposition. Okay, go ahead and come forward if you could state your name for the record before you start speaking. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Nicole Price. I am a resident of the Newport Hills neighborhood. I just want to say I've had the opportunity, over the course of the last week, to go to two of the three events hosted by the city to talk about the zoning issues as well as the parks' planning issues. And I wanted to commend your staff for doing a great job in communicating to the community what's going on in the city and what will be happening in our neighborhood. I wanted to communicate what I've been hearing from my neighbors to you guys and share some of my thoughts. So, some of what I'm hearing from my neighbors is a fear of not being able to age in their homes, a loss of walkability within the community, and a loss of some of the things that we've loved about the neighborhood, reasons why we moved there. I don't think that increasing density or providing additional-
I gotta stop you right now. We've had three people speak to the density, and we can only have three.
Okay, let me think about how I'm gonna word this.
Yeah, I know you can do it.
Change is going to come to our neighborhood. It's going to come to all the neighborhoods in the city of Bellevue. And I believe that change can be done in a way that preserves the things that people love about the neighborhood while accommodating new neighbors if need be. So, I think that careful guidance from the city with regards to design guidelines and the possibility of upzoning, if I can say that, in thoughtful ways can create a space where we can maintain our commercial core, which is the heart of our neighborhood, and maintain our walkability that could be lost with additional development due to the missing sidewalks in our neighborhood. Our neighborhood has been developed over a period of decades by individual developers who maybe did or did not put in sidewalks. And so, one of the reasons why our neighborhood is walkable is because it's a single-family zoning. And so, as that changes, without those additional sidewalks, we lose our walkability within the neighborhood. One of the other things that we value about our neighborhood is the connectivity to natural areas and the trail system within the city of Bellevue. But again, because of the missing sidewalks, we don't have that connectivity. So if there's a way through design guidelines to manage that and maintain that, that'd be fabulous. And then, you know, right now, we all drive our cars because that's how we get around. We do have transit in the neighborhood, but it's infrequent. And so, if there were to be more housing, a larger community centered around the commercial core, there might be an opportunity to-
Miss Price, I apologize. Your time has expired, but you can email the council at BellevueWa.gov.
Thank you for testifying.
Are there any additional speakers this evening? Mr. Sargent, please come forward.
My name's Lee Sargent. I live at 16246 Northeast 24th Street, and I would like to present my thoughts about Janice Zahn because she represents the product of all of you. I've been very impressed in the brief time that I've been the outsider in this room. And I've watched each of you share different aspects of what's going on in our life as a city. And I find that you have done so sometimes at odds with one another, and that's fine because there are differences that need to be emphasized. I've seen Zahn basically step up and continue to follow up on a particular thing that was being presented, and even when it wasn't quite, you know, what everybody else was in agreement with at that particular time. I think that's just amazing. And it's a product of what has happened because of the staff and you. And I look at Hamilton and I say, "My guys, this guy just came on." And I look at, you know, our deputy mayor, Malacutian, and I say, "Hey, he just came on." And it was like he was here all the time because you work so well together, you are so well-cued to what the city is doing, and you are striving to do the best that you can. And I really think you'll do well in the state legislature. And I think you'll do well with whoever comes in next. Thank you.
Thank you. One final call for hands. Okay, no additional hands, Mayor. I'll turn it back to you.
Okay, thank you. We have a report of our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. Tonight, we're pleased to share an update of a program the city of Bellevue and the Bellevue School District started way back in 2005, so it's a 20-year celebration tonight for the Wraparound Services Program. And that program has impacted very positively thousands of children and families in our community. So we have tonight Tony Esparza, our Assistant Director within Human Services Division of Parks and Community Services, Liliana Godinez, Community Services Program Director. Also, a welcome to Dr. Ricardo Masias, Director of Community Outreach at the Bellevue School District, and Jeannie Anderson, who is our Wraparound Services Program Coordinator. And with that, I'll turn it over to Tony.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. We are here tonight to celebrate, celebrate 20 years of a program that you started to ensure that the needs of families and children are met. We are partnered with the Bellevue School District to improve outcomes for our students and families, some of whom face some of the most significant barriers in our community. In 2005, the city recognized that if we collaborated with the school district, the needs of some of these community members could be supported in a location that they were already accessing, which was their neighborhood school. The program focuses on building collaboration, partnerships, and meetings surrounding neighborhood and other partners in advancing the city's vision of being a place where everyone can thrive. We work with the district to provide services for a growing diverse community, to involve our community in the life of these families and the school, and to bring the community into the school to support our students and families, and to ensure that all of our kids and families are welcomed, included, belong, and have the resources that they need. Our two program coordinators, Liliana and Jeannie, who's here with us in the audience, are currently placed at Lake Hills Elementary and Stevenson Elementary. These schools serve a highly diverse population who bring immense strengths and contributions to our community. The students of these schools also face some of the most immense barriers, including students experiencing poverty and homelessness. Over the past 20 years, our staff have worked at Stevenson and Lake Hills, along with a number of other schools. But for tonight, we're just picturing these two schools. At these two schools alone, our work has directly served more than 20,000 students, with the impact extending to their family members and to the broader community. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Liliana Godinez to describe the work that she does.
Thank you. The work of Wraparound follows an annual cycle. We assess the needs through annual data gathering to identify the biggest gaps via a range of interviews, focus group surveys. We adopt an annual work plan. We work with the district and school leadership to establish a plan to address the identified gaps for that community. We move to collaborative implementation. We work with the school leadership and city resources to build relationships and develop resources that respond to the needs of families most in need. Using a strength-based approach, the Wraparound Program addresses social issues, recreation, health, academic needs, family services, and community needs. A few practical examples of this work have included connecting children and families to mental health services, creating partnerships that provide children with after-school activities, including sports, fine arts, robotics, and chess, hosting community fairs for families to access immunizations, vision, dental, or providing, I'm sorry, or information of other community events, providing crisis support to families, ensuring access to housing, food, and clothing, collaborating with community partners to provide children with access to tutoring, mentoring programs, and early screening for learning disabilities, collaborating with community partners to provide children with access to childcare and summer programming. Wraparound Services coordinators engage in a wide range of activities to support the success and thriving of students and families, ranging from parent support events, bringing in community volunteers and donors, and responding when there is a crisis. Recent activities of the Wraparound Team have included bringing in a tutoring agency to address lasting impacts from the pandemic, developing free onsite after-school programming opportunities, and leading family and community events, including game nights and multicultural Our work focuses on several outcomes. For children, this is an increased school readiness, sense of belonging and ownership, feeling that the school is their place, strong attendance at school, and increased participation in out-of-school activities, greater participation in service learning activities that give back to school and community. Families are more involved in their children's education. Families feel more connected and welcome at the school. Families view the school as a positive resource for their children's success. Families have increased access to services. For community, we increase the use of buildings and outdoor facilities during out-of-school hours, increase multicultural and multi-generational community involvement at the school. Neighbors have a more positive attitude towards the school. And now, I will pass things over to Dr. Ricardo Masias, the Bellevue School District Director of Community Outreach.
Good evening, council members, Mayor, Deputy Mayor. Sorry, I think I got a little something. I want to start by just saying thank you. It is an honor to be here on behalf of the Bellevue School District. I moved here to Bellevue about seven years ago, and I started off in the district as an assistant principal at one of our elementary schools, where we do have a wraparound coordinator. So I got to experience firsthand the impact that this program is having on our community. Jeannie Anderson has been there for a while, has developed this trust and support systems for our community to really embrace everybody who's part of the Lake Hills community and supporting them all, you know, thriving. I know I've recently worked with her, and I'm gonna cite a few examples of the work that they've been doing. But again, I want to be here just expressing our gratitude from Bellevue School District for this critical program that helps support our community. One of the things that really we've identified with this is that it has been a crucial support in filling in gaps. So I want to tell you two examples that I remember. One, two years ago, or one, or last year ago, I'm sorry, last year, Jeannie partnered with Instituto Cervantes from Spain because at Lake Hills, we have a Spanish dual-language program, and we have families who are both learning Spanish and, you know, as well as English. So we partnered with them. She led all the effort, and we provided classes, Spanish classes, for families who wanted to learn Spanish. So the picture that you see on the top is our first cohort of, you know, parents who were part of this magnificent program, as well as a coordinator from the Instituto Cervantes. And this could not happen if it would have been from all the work that Jeannie put in place. Again, working with families and students has been so crucial for the support that our coordinators have been providing to our community. Liliana, another example that I can remember of is the tutoring program at Stevenson, which has been super helpful and impactful to many of our students. So again, we're really thankful and appreciative for this program and our collaboration and partnership with the city of Bellevue and supporting our community. We know that the impact that they have had with over 20,000 students, I believe you mentioned, Tony, is really hard to measure and put in a couple of slides. But again, we want to express our gratitude and that we're looking forward to continuing with this work and partnering with you in serving our community.
With that, we just want to thank you again for being an innovative council and for investing in our community and trusting us to serve our community. Thank you so much.
Great, great presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, did you have anything else you wanted to say, city manager?
No, that concludes the report. Thank you.
Okay. So we, up on our council business, we have five reappointments to many commissions, and since we already know everybody, I was hoping we could just do one motion to reappoint everybody. So Deputy Mayor, go ahead.
Absolutely, Mayor. I move to reappoint Bhavna Barghava to the Arts Commission, Andy Duperius to the Environmental Services Commission, Jas Karan, Saint Saro, and Angela Fan to Human Services Commission, Elizabeth Kronov to the Parks and Community Services Board, and Andres Villaveses to the Planning Commission, each to a full term expiring May 31, 2029.
Second. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. We're gonna take a break here and come back at 25 after, if that's okay. So we have two study session items this evening, and our first one, I'll let our city manager introduce.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. I would like to welcome back the King County Metro staff, who've been working on the K-line project, and the city of Bellevue staff from the Transportation Department. They're here to give you a project update, including some feedback received from the third round of the community engagement. And after the presentation, the staff is seeking council direction to prepare a letter in support of King County Metro's Rapid Ride K-line locally-preferred alternative. We have Director Andrew Singalakis from the Transportation Department, Olivia Makala from, also from the Transportation Department, and from King County Metro, healthy again, we have Ryan Whitney, Amanda Pleasant Brown, and Yuvia Ellison Morales. And with that, I'll turn it over to Andrew.
Okay, well, thank you, city manager Carlson, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Malacutian. And I'm here to be, pleased to be here with Metro for the final step in the locally-preferred alternative process. We're here tonight to request that the council provide a letter of support for the locally-preferred alternative for the K-line. And it should be noted that the city of Kirkland Council has recently approved the LPA as well. And as you know, the K-line is a metro rapid ride service that will connect Totem Lake in Kirkland with East Gate in Bellevue, with stops in the downtowns of both Bellevue and Kirkland. The K-line project and projects like it are instrumental for moving people through cities in their centers to accommodate the growth projected in our comprehensive plans. Rapid ride services provide the person throughput needed to reduce the growth in general vehicle congestion. There have been a few changes that have occurred since the last time we saw you back in February 11th, based on council feedback and also from the public and from staff. And we appreciate Metro's partnership in this. And if you recall, the North 10th Street Bat Lanes were primarily responsible for traffic impacts on intersections with Northeast 8th and also for Northeast 12th due to the diversion from 10th Street. And so, since that time, the Bat Lanes on 10th Street have been removed. With the Northeast 10th Street Bat Lanes removed, nearly all the impacts of the general purpose traffic have been removed from the analysis, and the K-line meets its time performance targets as well. targets as well. But, you know, even though we are removing these two Bat Lanes, there's still several others in the project which need to remain in order for the K-line to achieve its travel time savings targets. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ryan.
Awesome. Thank you, Andrew, and thank you for noting. It is good to be here in person and not virtually as last time, although thank you for accommodating that request, as I was not on my best, but I'm back to my peak, so happy to be here. And I am Ryan Whitney. I am the line lead for the Rapid Ride K-line project for King County Metro. And then Yuvia.
My name is Yuvia Ellison Morales, and I'm the Senior Community Engagement Planner.
And I'm Amanda Pleasant Brown. I do government relations, and I just want to offer first and foremost to add to the Love Fest council members on, thank you for all of your work. We really appreciate, on behalf of Metro, thank you for all of your participation, your work on the Regional Transit Committee, the East Side Transportation Partnership. It's been critical, and we look forward to continuing to work with you in the state. So thank you so much for your service. And then I want to offer a sincere thank you to your staff, Director Singalakis, Olivia, Lacey Jane, we've worked really well together. They have ensured that we have moved forward on your priorities, we have taken those seriously, we have taken each of your comments and feedback, we've worked together to ensure that we're delivering our project and seeking your support today on something that I think we hope we can all agree on. Thank you so much.
All right. We'll jump in here, so I got a little presentation outline for what we're going to cover today. Again, going to just touch a little bit on why invest in Rapid Ride. I know you guys have the Rapid Ride B-line service here, want to talk about that a little bit. Also, an update on the project schedule. We'll recap a little bit what we talked about in February, and then what we did not cover in February, which was Phase 3 engagement. So Yuvia is here to provide a detailed update on that. And then it'll come back to me to cover the project vision summary, a little more information on the Northeast 10th Street Bat Lanes, and then the letter of support request and next So why invest in Rapid Ride? It's Metro's largest investment area, and you can see from the map here how we're hoping to expand our Rapid Ride service. We added the H-line and the G-line, which both are still continuing to see rising ridership. The G-line's now averaging over 5,000 average daily boardings, and the H-line is almost 8,000 average daily boardings. So it's great growth on two recently-launched Rapid Ride routes that represent our new Rapid Ride 2.0, which is what K-line would be. B-line is part of the legacy lines, which was the A through F lines, so that was our Rapid Ride 1.0 standards, and even that continues to see good ridership around 4,500 boardings in 2025, which continues to show recovered ridership. Little update on the project's schedule, as I think Andrew mentioned, we did receive the letter of support for the LPA from Kirkland Council last week. We're here to request the same of Bellevue Council. And then in June, we would hopefully have the project vision adopted by King County Council, which then would enable us to move forward with the next phases of the project, which include the Small Starts Grant application submittal to FTA and preliminary design in the fall. We have already started some preliminary work on the NEPA environmental approval, because that process can take 12 to 18 months, so we wanted to get that underway. Recap from February, we were here, or I was not, but Metro was here to talk about the really in-depth details on the speed and reliability projects, also covered some of the access to transit improvement areas. We talked about transit travel time savings and person throughput, how this investment in Rapid Ride K-line can help move more people through the City of Bellevue more efficiently, reliably. And then we talked about the impacts to general purpose, because in some areas, these projects that we're looking at do impact general purpose traffic, and how do we balance that in the transportation system? And as I mentioned, what we did not cover in February, because we were still actively in our community engagement Phase 3, was community engagement, but Yuvia is here to provide an update on that. So with that, I will hand it over to Yuvia.
Yes, just this minute. Okay. Thank you, Ryan. And I just want to preface this by saying that the community engagement report is still in draft, but we are looking forward to having it published at the end of April. So what I'm going to share are what we did, who we talked to, some findings, samples that come from our report, and then again, happy to, we'll make sure that that's shared on our website, and that we're sharing it through all our communication channels. Okay, so moving ahead, so the Rapid Ride K-line journey has been a journey that has been intentionally done with community. This has been something that we've been working with since Cindy's assessment back in the fall of 2019, when we worked with community to gather input to determine route and inform concepts. There was a pause, and then we came back last summer to be able to basically share what we had heard back in Phase 1, and then ask the community, hey, what do you think about routing choices in downtown Bellevue, and what are your thoughts around station locations? And when it comes to challenges on access to transit, you know, again, what are those challenges? And so that is what we ended up sharing in this Phase 3. So that was the project vision. It was the draft project vision that we wanted to bring back to community and say, okay, we've heard from you in these past phases, this is kind of what we've narrowed it down to, and we would like to get your thoughts and your comments. We want to understand if we have in fact confirmed that this project meets community values, and we want to also know if we missed anything. So Phase 3 was from January 16th to February 13th. It was a total of four weeks. This map shows the community engagement in-person activities that took place during this four-week stage, open houses, we had our community liaisons that we've worked with, so that way they could help deliver the information to places of worship, to multicultural community centers. We attended in-person briefings at the request of neighborhood associations and community organizations. We did street teamings and tableings. This map does not show the online and virtual engagement conversations that we also had. So we did have virtual briefings, we also had online open houses that were offered on weekday and weekend, we also offered virtual office hours that were essentially every week at the same time, just to make sure that we were meeting the community where it made sense, we were meeting the community where they asked us to engage with them. So in total, we engaged with about 1,800 community members directly, and based off of all of the activities that I had already shared. And the majority of the people that we heard back from did come from the online survey, which was great, because that was exactly what the purpose was of the engagements. We were asking them to, we wanted to make sure that they were aware of the project, that they could, you know, that we had the opportunity to answer any questions, and really kind of pushing them towards the online survey, so that way they could really spend time giving us further feedback. But the community engagement report does focus on making sure that we're providing a balanced understanding of not just what we heard from those that provided the survey, but also in the various community engagement activities, because we want to give, you know, we want to be respectful and mindful of the fact that even those folks that sent us emails, even the folks that, you know, in passing by at the QFC tabling, they still made the effort of stopping, listening, and then providing some thoughts, and so all that is going to be covered and shared in the report. In these next two slides, there's two slides that I wanted to share, just some sample findings, if you will, but these are really forms of measuring our effectiveness of community engagement. Because for Metro, it's not just about a check-the-box list of saying, hey, we did all these activities, and it was great, but this is really kind of what tells us how effective we are in making sure that the information that was being shared, and that the information that was being brought back to us, was done in a balanced view. So I'm pleased to report that the responses that we heard from the survey respondents matched the local demographics in the following areas: race, age, people with disabilities, and household income. Another form of measuring our effectiveness was trying to understand, again, you know, how effective were we in making sure that others were well-informed about this project? And so this was actually a question that we had asked last summer, and then we followed up by asking it again in January. And, you know, we were quite delighted to see that, you know, when it comes to, this is a first, I've heard of it, that had actually decreased. When it comes to, I've heard of it before, but I don't know very much about it, that also decreased. And what did increase was, I feel somewhat informed about it. So it jumped from 13% to 20%. And then we saw the same thing, you know, kind of across the board on, I feel well-informed about it. So these next two slides are the themes that we heard overall. So again, it wasn't just a matter of trying to understand what the themes are, whether coming from the online survey, or themes that are coming from briefings, it was really, what was something that was consistent that we heard across the board in all of the engagement activities? This is what provides the balanced view, this is what provides that community input. So top two things, community priorities, definitely more transit service, you know, prioritizing fast, reliable public service. This is something that we constantly hear about, and I was pleased to hear that even on the Rapid Ride K-line, this was a consistent matter. When it came to access to transit, there was no major concerns. I mean, people understand that there is value in making sure that access to transit improvement paths do benefit their neighbors, it benefits family members, it benefits friends, right? Because we're basically creating a better way, a safer way for folks to walk, to roll, to bike. And this next one, oh, sorry. So these other two themes were a little bit more complex, so we did put together a map. So for the theme of routing and station locations, there was two areas. One of routing along 108th in Kirkland, there was definitely some feedback of shared concerns, and again, these are things that we heard across the board. And so that's why we labeled it as one, to kind of show exactly where the concerns were shaping up. And then the other thing under routing and station locations is we actually heard positively that prioritizing transit centers and parking rights makes sense. So people were actually quite pleased to see that the Rapid Ride K-line does end up connecting with all those major points. Another concern that popped up was regarding property impacts. There was questions about, you know, what's going to happen when this Rapid Ride K-line comes, and so those are things that Metro will continue to work with property owners to help mitigate any major impacts. The final theme that was also, again, very consistent was service coverage and connections. So there was questions regarding, you know, existing routes, what's going to happen to my current local route. There was also specific questions with regard to expanding the service area. We actually did hear, like, this is a great project, we would love to see it continue moving even further than where you have it, and, you know, and when is that going to happen? And then there was also questions regarding direct access to Seattle. So again, the community engagement report will be published at the end of April, and I do want to go ahead and take this opportunity to say that I'm so thankful to all the community residents, the community members that stopped, that took the time to give us feedback in person, online, sending us emails, making comments on social media, we've been tracking those, and all of that will be made available and transparent in our report. So with that, I will pass it over to Ryan.
Awesome. Thank you, Yuvia. And so I will then go into some of the things that were revised in the locally-preferred alternative, and what we are actually requesting the letter of support for. So summary of what's in the locally-preferred alternative, which I believe was included in council packets, is our 35 passenger facilities or station pairs along the 16-mile route, the 11 access-to-transit investment areas, which identify sidewalk projects, bike lanes, and enhanced crossings. As Yuvia mentioned, we saw a lot of support and not a lot of negative comments on the access to transit projects. People appreciated that we were not just looking at the transit service itself, but kind of the expanded impact of that, how people get to that service and making sure that those crossings are safe, there's ways to bike to it, to walk to it, to roll to it. And then also, we saw a lot of emphasis on people wanting this route to be reliable, to be fast, and to be frequent, which is what Rapid Ride is all about. Our service is going to be every 10 to 15 minutes during peak hours. The longest someone would wait for the bus is 30 minutes, and that would be in the off-peak hours. So there was a lot of emphasis and support for the speed and reliability projects, and we are happy to say that we still have 20 speed and reliability projects recommended in the locally-preferred alternative. This includes Bat Lanes and Q-jumps, and then transit signal priority is also listed under there, but it's not really one of the 20, as we're looking to upgrade all the signals within the project area to next-gen transit signal priority, with the exception of signals in downtown Bellevue. Northeast 10th Street Bat Lanes was one of the major changes from when we were here in February to now, and this was the result of feedback from council, community, Bellevue staff, and also the analysis that we did of the downtown network. So we did decide to remove both Bat Lanes on Northeast 10th Street, the westbound and eastbound Bat Lane, and our revised transit travel time savings is now 44.7 minutes, and this is for the PM peak in year 2035. Removing these had the following impact on the project. It fully mitigates the increase in eastbound general-purpose travel time that we found in year 2044 on Northeast 8th Street and Northeast 12th Street. It also brings the intersection of Northeast 8th Street and 116th Avenue Northeast into the vehicle performance targets for year 2044. And again, our revised travel time savings is 45.7 minutes, or 24%, which is within Metro's target for Rapid Ride investment of 15 to 30%. So for the letter of support, the adoption of the LPA achieved several project milestones. It will confirm the Rapid Ride K-line route, which is important, because it lets us begin our NEPA environmental process, and it also identifies the general station locations, so we can begin preliminary design on those stations and start looking at what the property impacts would be, access impacts to potential driveways, and how we would serve those intersections. It allows Metro to apply for an initial small starts rating and get into the grant funding pipeline. Again, for us to receive small starts funding, we need to be rated, we need to have a medium rating, and we need to be in that pipeline, so when funding becomes available, we can be awarded it. And then it allows Metro to begin preliminary design work, because the second part of receiving that funding is to have a project that's ready to go when the FTA says, we have money for you. So our next steps, after requesting the letter of support here today, would be to transmit our locally-preferred alternative and alignment ordinance package to King County Council in May, which would put us on track to have an adopted alignment ordinance in June or July, which then sets us up for submitting our small starts grant application in August and beginning preliminary design activities in the fall. And with that, we will take questions, but I will also first turn it back to Andrew to close us out.
Just a recap of the direction, which is to receive the authority to send off a letter to Metro for the locally-preferred alternative.
Do we have a copy of that letter?
It's been drafted, but I don't know if you've received it yet.
Trying to think, there's a number of letters going around today. Did we see this one, this draft? So we're just going to yea or nay a letter without knowing what the letter is?
Well, the letter will end up speaking on behalf of supporting the locally-preferred alternative.
Okay, great. Let's start with Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I support this, obviously. It's a good thing, you know. The only thing I express some concern, or at least some question about, is making sure we have a good local connection, you know, that serves areas that may need to have some connection, you know, for whatever, either local existing system or other ways of connecting. So as long as it's, I understand it probably is included. If it does cover that concern, I was looking, I'm looking at a director, you know, and if it does, I'm happy, I'd be happy to support it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Big thank you to the King County Metro team for their excellent public engagement, stakeholder outreach, and collaboration with Andrew and his team. We want and need more transit here on the east side, and the K-line goes a long way in helping us meet the demand. Thank you to Andrew, Olivia, Lacey Jane, for all the great work you've done to get us to the point where we have a solid proposal in front of us. I think everyone has been heard in this process, and it's appreciated. Not sure where the council member feedback originated, but I appreciate you taking it seriously and requesting the removal of the westbound Bat Lane on Northeast 10th. It's great to see the positive impact this change will have on general-purpose travel while mitigating anticipated vehicle diversions. I think this is a substantial improvement. I think the K-line is easy to support. I'm completely in favor of providing a letter of support for the locally-preferred alternative. Look forward to the K-line getting up and moving, and I know that we will continue to be great partners with King County Metro to complete it. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Noonhouse.
Thank you, and great update. Thank you so much. You know, as we are always thinking about, as we grow as a city, these investments are incredibly important to have the safe, frequent, and reliable transit in our city, and the K-line is a great example of that, and is key as we continue to grow and not, you know, for visitors, workers, students alike, it's another incredibly great option to get through Bellevue and go up to Kirkland, so, or vice versa. So it's just great. And I'm fully in support of the letter and on the locally-preferred alternative as we move forward here. I really appreciate the great work between staff and Metro, that's been great to see. Also, just a thoughtful way about, you know, looking at the 10th Street Bat Lane, removing that, also maximizing the, hopefully... that, also maximizing the, hopefully, the use of the bat lanes as we continue to move forward on 1980, and really appreciate a lot of our major employers in the city advocating for that as well, as we want to maximize use as much as possible. And that's an exciting development here. And like I mentioned earlier, it's great that councilmembers on, or representatives on, maybe I should say, was able to move that along so quickly down in Olympia. I hope that as that moves forward, the permit fee that employers pay for that doesn't outweigh their benefit or perceived benefit from doing it. So that's my only caution there, but I feel like it's on a good path, so. And also, just want to say, I really appreciate, I think, the good balance that we've struck here in terms of, you know, providing another just incredibly useful transit option, but also balancing that with the greater transportation network within Bellevue, and always kind of keeping in mind how this is going to, one way or another, impact other modes of travel. So really appreciate that. So it's been a great process, and like I said, fully supportive of this and moving this forward. So thank you, and thanks for the great presentation tonight.
Thank you. Councilmembers on.
Yes. Thank you. I feel like I was really blessed. It's almost like I got a gift that my last meeting was going to be able to vote in support of this letter. So thank you very much. I agree that I really appreciate Amanda, the partnership, and having been able to serve on ETP and the Regional Transit Committee, and just the kind of collaboration that can happen when we think holistically about a system approach to how we get around and how we work on fast, reliable, and frequent transit service. So I very much support this. I think as we continue to grow in Bellevue, especially in downtown, the ability to maximize the use is going to be really important. And I really appreciate that. Literally, for information, those bills this year started at 1,001. So the fact that it was bill number 1980 was like literally the last 30 to 40 bills to get dropped as part of that first tranche of bills. And I just really appreciate the fact that it started out as a much smaller bill, and then the partnership and the stakeholdering created some guardrails that got all the stakeholders to say yes. And so it was unanimously passed out of the House because of that. And so just, I know that that is the work of the staff working across, so just thank you, thank you for making that happen. And I agree with my colleague, this does appear to me to be a balanced route that threads a needle through our downtown. I'm super excited to see that we are seeing recovery of our ridership, because if we are driving on 405 at all at any time of the day, we see that it is literally a parking lot at times. So I'm really excited about that, happy that we're going to sign on to the letter or create a letter. I do have two questions. One is the small starts grant from the FTA. What are our thoughts? What are we hearing about in terms of with the new change in government? Whether these kinds of grants are going to continue, or if we might see some shift in that, those funds? So that's question one. And then question two, I understand about the revisiting the bat lanes. As the project progresses, if we do more forecast or we learn more, is there opportunity within that route to make any tweaks of those bat lanes, either more or less? I'm just trying to get a better understanding. I know the route would be fixed, but what portion is the bat lane?
Yeah, absolutely. So I'll start, and then I'll pass it over to Ryan. So regarding the small start shift in funds, we haven't received that there's, we haven't received indication that there's anything changing. So it's still been included from what we know, and we will just keep moving forward. We still have our quarterly meetings with FTA. We haven't seen any news about that department, and so, but that is a part of partnership. So in the event that we do hear anything, you know, Director Singalakis and over at the City of Kirkland, those will be our first calls.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And to add to the first point, one of the things that we're looking at from my team at King County Metro is to make it as simple as possible. So to reduce, you know, some of these applications can be a lot of work for both the agency and for FTA. If there's anything we can do to reduce work on either side and make it more of a streamlined application, we're trying to do that, because what it does is get us into a pipeline. Council allocates how much money FTA is going to have, and if you're in the pipeline and you're ready, then they start, you know, providing money. So we can be, being in the pipeline now is good, because we're not anticipating construction until 2028. So that gives us a few budget cycles to hopefully have funds allocated. So that's on the first question. On the second question, and also, I guess, leading to the first one, this will be our initial rating with FTA, and we'll probably get a second rating and possibly a third rating. So the reason for the multiple ratings is as we continue to develop the project, we can do, you said, we can add more speed and reliability to become more competitive. We can look at ways to make our project more cost-effective to increase our rating until we get that final rating, which then is when they determine how much money we are eligible to receive.
Okay, so tonight is just the route, but there are tweaks along the way.
Correct, correct, yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Stokes.
Now, this is very exciting, and I really appreciate my colleagues, and I think they've gone over everything we talked about on this and all, but in looking at this and thinking in long terms of where we've come and where we're going on this, this is not only something that is really needed for now, but it's a great example of what we can do in the rest of the region and all, how we can put it together, and what is, and we've had this for a long time. Give kudos to King County, working with us on the east rail, all these other things. And it really is important to have King County Metro and the city working together. And I think that's one of the most important things that's happening in this. You can go build roads, they're built all around the places and all, but you put it together, and I think, and this is something we can learn from, and we're going to have to do more of these down the line. So getting this one in place will be a real great piece, and it's connecting us with Kirkland, and that's very good, too. I mean, the area is a regional area, and you're putting it that way, and so it really helps. So I'm just very pleased with this, it's exciting to see it going, and I think we're all ready to get out there and, you know, take a, dig a piece of dirt and get it going. So thank you very much. And again, thank you for our staff and your staff working together the way you do. That doesn't always happen, and it's very great, and let's just keep this up and get this thing done as soon as possible. And if you need to come back and talk with us, we're obviously, with staff and council, wherever you talk with you. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ryan, Amanda, Yuvia. What a great slide on public engagement. I never seen this beautiful detail. Your graphic was on the point, great job on that. Andrew, Olivia, Lacey Jane, thank you so much for all of your hard work on this project. You not only keep us informed through the process, doing a great job on the community engagement, but also address all of our concerns. All of my fellow councilmembers mentioned that, I'm going to repeat, when we are increasing our density and we are growing this fast, we need to match our infrastructure to that density growth, and I think having a reliable transportation is going to be part of that. The very interesting thing about this project and your last presentation is that we are seeing the smaller budgets, we are removing bat lane in tents, we are seeing a good traffic flow, but also we are still having our travel time goals of the reduction. So a great balance, as all of my fellow councilmember mentioned. So overall, great job, and thank you. I'm full support for this.
Thank you, and I agree with my colleagues. I think this is a great example of a partnership and a nibble in responsive governance. So it looks good to me, I'm all for it. And with that, we'll take a motion.
I move to direct City of Bellevue staff to prepare a letter for the mayor's signature on behalf of the council in support of King County Metro's Rapid Ride K-line draft locally preferred alternative.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Okay, it passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have another study session item that we added. Councilmember Zahn, did you want to say anything?
I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay, so is this goodbye?
I'm going to sit out in the audience.
Okay.
Because I would like to listen, but I am not weighing in at all.
Okay. Then we won't say goodbye yet. City manager, would you like to introduce this one?
Thank you, Mayor and council, for acting tonight to add this study session regarding legislative item for discussion tonight. So as you know, both the House and Senate put out revenue tax proposals late last week. This was following a conversation that you had last Tuesday, that you gave a nod to a framework for evaluating those proposals. So it happened rather quickly, and staff is here tonight to seek some guidance from the council regarding communication to our legislators and others regarding some of the components of the tax proposals. So we have Jenice Edkins, our deputy city manager, Katie Kasimahalzy, our assistant director of intergovernmental relations, of course, Evan Phillips has joined them from FAM, and I believe perhaps Breonna Murray might join us online. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jenice.
Okay. Thank you, city manager, mayor, deputy mayor, members of the council, thank you for having us back this evening. As the city manager mentioned, my colleagues, Katie and Evan and I, and our consultant, Breonna Murray, who's right there online, we are here really following on not only the heels of the conversation that we had last week with your mid-session update, where we presented some guidelines for examination of state revenue and budget proposals. But we heard from you directly at the end of the week that you wanted to have an opportunity to have this conversation, so we're bringing it forward for you, to provide information for you to have that conversation tonight. And so we will move right in. Oh, that's me. All right, so we are seeking your consideration to direct staff to articulate a city position on proposed revenue strategies in the legislature through a variety of means. All right, so briefly, what we're going to do this evening is we're going to very briefly touch on some of the proposed budget highlights in the House budget and in the Senate budget. The Senate budget came out on Thursday, and House on Friday, is that right? And so this was all new, even more recently than the packet was published, and so that's why you have this PowerPoint presentation this evening, and no memo to accompany it, because this was really rapidly evolving. We're going to also give you an early analysis of some of the potential impacts that we're seeing, both more broadly for Bellevue, and then Bellevue-specific as an employer and a municipality. We will revisit briefly the guidelines on budget and revenue that you affirmed last week, and then present you with a recommendation for next steps for you to discuss and consider. All right, so very briefly, in terms of the session budget deliberations, I think you know by now that the state legislature is in a difficult position trying to reconcile some pretty staggering budget shortfalls. They are anticipating somewhere between $12 to $15 billion in shortfalls over the next four years. And of course, the state does its budget for the upcoming biennium, as well as for the next one out to have a four-year, it's a state law that they balance over four years. So the proposals we saw last week are the kind of opening salvo from the House Democratic Caucus and from the Senate Democratic Caucus on how they would approach that. And of course, in addition to this, there is a conversation about reductions. The governor, reductions were proposed first by Governor Inslee, as well as by Governor Ferguson, and then in the Senate budget writers, we're proposing to make a set of cuts amounting to altogether about $6 billion. This is, I will say it now and probably later in this presentation, this is the very beginning of the budget process in Olympia. This is really where the policy bills kind of start to mature, like a fine wine, and get a little better, and there are less of them. But the budget really takes center stage, and then for the next month, this is going to evolve many, many different times. And so this conversation is very early, just at the very first steps of what we're going to see next. All right, so we're going to jump in first to a high-level overview of what we've seen. And again, the focus here really catapulted off of last week's conversation around guidelines to examine revenue tools and taxes. We're not really talking about the spending side of the legislature's proposed budgets, but on what means and mechanisms they are proposing to use to close that budget shortfall that they are confronting. So the first thing you'll see on here is an additional 1% business and occupation tax surcharge on businesses that have over $250 million in annual revenues. That's House Bill 2045. That also includes in the House an increase in the existing surcharge for financial institutions with an income over $1 billion. The second major tax source that the House is proposing is a financial intangibles tax. The nickname for this is called the wealth tax of $8 on every $1,000 value on investment assets. And so what that means is stocks, bonds, mutual funds, other things. And then the first $50 million in assessed value is exempt from this tax. And then the third major highlight that we are elevating for you is a change to the property tax. And so this is lifting the property tax lid to grow funding for education and for public safety. It does allow an increase in the property tax levy over 1% to adjust for inflation and population, but in the House, they do limit that to not exceed 3%. And we can talk about that more, but there is a past practice that came on the heels of the 2012 McCleary decision, where they, starting in 2018, did lift the property tax above 1%. And then that handful of years later, that stopped. And so this would be kind of, in a sort of way, resurrecting or re-implementing that. The House overall generates almost $15 billion over four years, and I will turn briefly to the Senate. The Senate proposed budget, here are some key highlights. One of the, perhaps the largest revenue generator here is a proposed statewide payroll tax of 5% for payroll expenses exceeding the Social Security threshold. That is currently set by the Social Security Administration at $176,100. That's Senate Bill 5796. A different version of that financial intangibles tax, in the Senate, it is $10 on every $1,000 of value. Again, that, it is only applicable to those taxpayers who have more than $50 million in those assets. Again, a lift on the property tax limitation to grow by population plus inflation. This one in the Senate does not have the 3% limitation. It does specifically expand a property tax exemption program for people with disabilities and for seniors. Worth mentioning that specifically. The Senate would also repeal 20 tax exemptions, where they, the J-LAR, Joint Legislative Audit and Review Committee, has found that the public policy objective has not been met. And then finally, one thing that is moving in the opposite direction is the Senate has proposed to reduce the state sales tax from 6.5% to 6%. In total, the Senate, these tools in the Senate would generate $17 billion over the next four years. Just a special note in here about the property tax cap. This is something that has been incorporated as a priority in Bellevue's legislative agenda this year and in prior years, also in the Association of Washington Cities priorities. The House and Senate take slightly different tax in trying to get at this, to try to make it both an expanded tool for cities and local governments and for school districts, but also for the state common schools levy. So there are some minor differences between the two. We're happy to talk about that, but it is just worth noting that this has specifically been included in our legislative agenda. We're happy to talk about that, but it is just worth noting that this has specifically been included in our legislative agenda this year and in prior years. So turning toward our early analysis, and I will give all of us and the many good subject matter experts who are not here at the table, many disclaimers here, which is, these are really early and preliminary impacts. We are still just learning about what some of these things may be because some of them are new. And so I want to make sure that we take this with a little bit of a grain of salt. Looking at Bellevue...
Did I skip over the first one?
Nope.
Okay.
Looking first at the Bellevue-specific impacts. So 5796, that payroll tax proposed in the Senate. So this, the city as an employer with a payroll that exceeds $7 million, we would be subject to this tax. The city would need to pay the Department of Revenue for our employees that exceed that threshold that I mentioned earlier. That is somewhere in the ballpark of 150 to 175 employees. And our preliminary estimates peg that at about $153,000 annually. Again, this is all pretty preliminary, but want to give you a sense of scale. The second note on there, these two proposals to allow property tax levies to grow, that has been something that has been a part of our legislative agenda. And it would allow cities, not just Bellevue, but all cities to, if they felt the need to keep pace with the needs associated with growth, that would be a revenue tool that they could bring to bear. And then finally, that Senate proposal reducing the state sales tax, that could have the impact of reducing the cost of some goods that we purchase, goods and materials that the city purchases. Bellevue more broadly, a little bit of analysis about the potential impacts. So first on 5796, the payroll tax. This is similar to the payroll tax that was implemented in the city of Seattle called the Jump Start Tax. It would give them a full credit, would give a credit to any city that has already imposed or that does go forward and impose a payroll tax. And because of that, it actually could incentivize cities to implement their own. This payroll tax, in the world of taxation tools, is a slightly more stable tax than something like the sales tax. But there is a other externality out there, which is that this payroll tax could result in potential economic slowdown if businesses were to choose to try to avoid paying this tax by relocating their business operations, which again, you kind of have echoed in that third bullet. Turning to the business and occupation tax on large employers, which is a part of the House proposal. This is really focused on very large employers. And we do worry that this could decrease large business growth and pose a competitive disadvantage for businesses that are growing in the state of Washington. This, again, compared to a sales tax, the BNO tax is more reliable, but it is really dependent on a number of different factors. We are probably disproportionately represented among the 400 impacted businesses of this large employer, large business BNO tax. We're going to have a larger share than many or most other cities. And this, the revenues that would be, you know, counted upon to be funded by this revenue stream may be unstable if the businesses that they're counting on to pay the taxes choose to relocate or grow elsewhere. All right, then bringing this back in front of you, we talked about this last week. These are the guidelines that we discussed with you through which we want to examine the potential budget and revenue tools that are presented by legislators in Olympia. And so looking at this and looking at our state legislative agenda, we wanted to bring you this opportunity to have a conversation with one another. And we do have a preliminary snapshot of how we are evaluating some of the major tools that we've just given a synopsis of. You'll see in that first column, so there's like a shorthand for the different criteria on the left-hand side. And then in the first column, that's that business and occupation tax increase for large employers in the House. In the center is the Senate Bill, the payroll tax, 5796. And then the third column is representative of the modifications to the property tax cap. And the key that we have decided to use for your consideration is how well these are aligned or not aligned with our state legislative agenda and with those guidelines on budget and revenue that were on the previous slide. So you can see some pretty good alignment with the changes proposed to the property tax cap. And then you can see a mixture of mixed alignment or misalignment with the BNO tax and the payroll tax. And we are happy to walk through this in greater detail, again, with that same acknowledgement that we are really working with brand-new information. And our, some of this information is estimated, speculative, and pretty premature. But we wanted to bring this to you as soon as we could for your discussion. So with all of that put together, here is a recommendation to the council for you to consider. Informed by that legislative agenda and those guidelines, we would recommend that you consider developing and endorsing a letter that we would send on Bellevue's behalf to our state legislators emphasizing a few points. And I won't read all of this to you, but I will summarize. We worry that the BNO tax and the payroll tax may discourage larger companies from expanding their presence in Bellevue and in Washington and could lead them, could present an incentive to relocate or grow in other states. Again, acknowledging that while the payroll tax is more stable compared to something like the sales tax, there is a possible secondary impact that could result in an economic slowdown and that could in fact undermine its own stability as a revenue source. The, these two proposals could have an unintended effect of displacing good family wage jobs in the community and that that could actually be destabilizing for some households. And we want to make sure that we continue to be a home for innovation and for business development and are worried that this sends a countersignal. And finally, this will have a focused impact on Bellevue's employment base because of the businesses that are currently located in Bellevue and may give us a, our state, a competitive disadvantage. And we would encourage that state lawmakers look harder at alternative options to bring to the table for their state budget challenges, given the potential consequences of these top-two revenue generating tools. So that is the presentation that we have put together for you. And we are happy to entertain any questions that you may have, but really wanted to bring you this early information for you to have a conversation with each other about how you want to proceed. Anybody want to add anything?
Hey.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. You were going to say anything, Katie?
No.
Okay, I was taking somebody else. I'm going to start with Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the update. Thank you for putting it together so quickly. Really appreciate your quick work considering how concerning the recent revenue proposals are and the potential for the proposals to harm our city and the entire state. Of particular concern is the statewide version of the Jump Start Head Tax. If implemented, this tax would be devastating to Bellevue, would force companies to concentrate their staffing outside of the state. We have seen businesses move out of Seattle. Thankfully, some of them have moved to Bellevue, so this is not hypothetical. Just as Bellevue has benefited from bad tax policy implemented elsewhere, other states and countries will happily reap the benefits of a misguided decision to impose a statewide head tax here in Washington. Anyone who thinks that businesses will merely adjust or learn to live with the new tax are fooling themselves. The decision by businesses to move out of state or grow out of state will not be motivated by greed, but by survival. And where the jobs go, the people have to go to. Our region and our city is where a lot of people want to be. For me, opposing the statewide head tax is a way to fight on behalf of our community members who want to continue to build a life here. Having run a business for over 25 years and having had a number of employees on my payroll who would have triggered this tax, I can say that it would have definitely forced decisions that would have negatively impacted our staff, customers, and community. I think the head tax proposal is too dangerous and too damaging for Bellevue for us to not vigorously oppose it. Just one clarification, if I could, on the BNO surcharge. So the, the surcharge is on revenue over $250 million, but the company would still pay their normal BNO rate on the $250 million and less. Is that right?
I believe that's correct.
Okay. So, and I just, you know, I think it's always worth remembering that the BNO tax on so-called taxable income is every dollar that a business generates. So BNO tax is levied on gross sales and not net profit. I think it's not hard to imagine how the, the impact on 39 Bellevue companies that would be subject to this tax and how they would have to react to such a dramatic cut in their profitability. You could easily guess that it would necessitate cuts to staffing, vendor, and services. Also want to point out that those cuts would be felt by other smaller businesses that rely on larger companies for their survival. Again, my own experience is that I endured plenty of cuts to my business when my clients had financial challenges that they solved in part by cutting the work that I did for them. This tax is a dangerous slippery slope for our local economy. I think essentially, I'm just asking our legislature to do what we just did here in Bellevue. We passed our budget in November. We knew that revenues were flat and we deliberately made sure that we maintained a strong financial foundation. And we plan to revisit our spending choices after we completed a thorough analysis and had a chance to review the most current financial forecast. I expect that we'll be able to make the critical investments that we need to make later this year, but time will tell. Our approach has served us well, and I hope that we can be a good example for the legislature. And I know how difficult it is for our legislators to adjust to lower revenues than hoped for and agree that not all of the revenue proposals are bad. Bellevue, many other cities, counties, school districts, and other special-purpose districts have long advocated for a change to property tax collections. And while the city doesn't keep that big of a percentage of property tax that folks pay, the current restrictions on how the tax is adjusted limits our ability to raise the revenue that we need in our city to pay for our commitments and needed investments. This is a welcome change, but it's only valuable if we're actually able to make use of it. I want to encourage the legislature to ensure that cities and others are not squeezed out of being able to collect and deploy our modest share of property tax revenue. I'm anxious to hear from my colleagues, but from how I say things now, I would like to see us produce a letter much along the lines of the draft that was in our packet and make it very clear that we completely oppose the imposition of a statewide version of a payroll head tax and BNO surcharge on large businesses and that we support the change to how property taxes are calculated, thus giving cities, counties, school districts, and others, other special-purpose districts, the ability to stabilize their revenue. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to go next, and I'm going to repeat what Councilmember Hamilton said. You know, we were told as a city that this was going to be a flat revenue year and that anything we added to the budget, we had to take something out. And so when they talk about the state budget having a shortfall, I don't think that's a shortfall. That's an overspending problem. And so I really think that they need to reexamine what they have added into the budget and how they're going to balance that. And, you know, currently Bellevue has the second-largest economy in Washington State, and I think it's the fastest-growing economy. We're doing really well, but it's hard to do business in Bellevue. Our property values are so high, the cost of living is so high. But we have a lot of good things going for us. And, and that is what attracts the companies to our city. We have an excellent school district. We have, you know, a clean city with high public safety. And we have excellent parks and green spaces, and employees want to be here. And when an employee wants to be here, the employer wants to be here. But that is all paid for by our, our economy. And so when you look at what you can be losing if these companies decide to leave, and it's very easy for them to leave, I promise you that. And it's a lot cheaper to have a business in another, in another state like Nevada. And there's a lot of discussions asking these companies to come to their states because they bring such a strong economy. But we lose high-paying jobs, we lose real community partners. And what people don't realize is how much our large employers as community partners invest into all our social services, our human services, all the things that go on in our city that are supplemented by donations from large employers. So if you were to add up all that they are already paying into the community, I think it would be quite a large number, plus providing living wages for people so we're not having to supplement their housing, they can afford housing. And that gives us an opportunity to help the people who are not getting paid as much. So it really concerns me, just the lens that we have on this, that this is some kind of a shortfall. I don't see it that way, and I'm very supportive of writing a letter. To me, the question is, one, you know, they're putting it out there that we could do this tax ourself, right? A city could do it yourself. Do you then give the money to the state or do you get to keep it? I didn't really understand that.
My understanding, and I'll look to all the other smart people here. My understanding is the way they've written the proposal, cities do have payroll tax authority. And if we went ahead and then adopted our own local payroll tax, then it would be credited against the state so that we would be able to retain the funding. Nope, I'm getting, Brianna's giving me a shakeoff. All right, Brianna?
Tell us.
Jump in. I feel like you're spending more time with this.
If a city has already enacted a payroll tax, like Seattle has, then it is credited against what the state has imposed. However, if a city has not enacted a payroll tax, I think the date is by 2020, it's a date in 2024. If the state has not enacted a payroll tax, you still have the authority to do so, but it is in addition to what the state has imposed.
Ugh, all right, that's, okay, thank you. So then the other thing to decide is, do we write a letter or do we do a resolution? And if we decide to do a letter, do we do it ourselves or do we do it in partnership with our other cities? So these are kind of all things up for discussion. Do you have feedback on, to us, on how you would recommend we do just a city letter, a joint letter, or a resolution, or all of the above?
I think our recommendation to you would be a couple of those things. I think a letter from the city of Bellevue to our Bellevue lawmakers. Because we are, while many or even all of these tools really are statewide in application, they will affect Bellevue disproportionately because of the number of large businesses that are specifically affected in Bellevue. And so I think having a Bellevue-specific letter from you to our own 41st and 48th District lawmakers would be very effective. In addition to that, I think collaborating on a broader letter with other cities would also have resonance with lawmakers as well. I think a resolution, while symbolic, won't have the heft of a comment letter. And so that, those are kind of our recommendations, but, okay. And I, Brianna, if you want to add anything more in there, you're welcome to.
I agree that a letter or letters are more effective than a resolution and that your greatest opportunity for influence is with the legislators that directly represent Bellevue.
Okay, you have answered my questions. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I just first wanted to say, not only we are very lucky to have Jenicey and Katie, we are very lucky to have Brianna in our team. I interacted with her twice in Olympia, and she was the smartest person in the room, wherever room and whatever official was there.
Wait, when I was there?
Policy-wise. Can you please go to slide 10? I love slide 11, by the way, both of them. As I mentioned last time, I really liked this slide. It's really emphasized economic prosperity, long-term competitiveness, and fair competition. And if you go back, if you will now go to slide 11. But when I saw your last column on the property tax, and I'm now just talking about the property tax cap, then I realized this list, as amazing as it is, lacks consideration of affordability and housing stability. 100% agree with my colleagues that business competitiveness and revenue predictability are important. We must also consider how raising property tax affects homeowner, renters, fixed-income residents who call Bellevue home. This list doesn't account for its impacts on individual, middle-class families and retirees that cannot afford if we increase their property tax. So, to me, the list, as great as I thought it is, now after I saw your amazing grading job in the column three on the property tax, I think we really need to have a criteria that protect individuals. And if we add that, that I think the property tax doesn't align with that. But now, let me go back to the column, your analysis is on those two bills. Like my colleagues, I also respect our legislators' efforts to address Washington financial shortfall. And I have all of the faith in them that they are going to figure something out. But I also cannot support SB 5796 and HB 2045. These are the bills that threaten and jeopardize our economic growth, undermine our ability to attract and retain talent, and make it more expensive to operate in Washington, obviously. Bellevue is home of thousands of people and that have jobs in science, technology, professional fields, industries that need innovation and economic mobility. If this measure passes, hope not, we risk losing high-paying jobs that provide stability for families and economic opportunities for individuals striving for a better future. This is not just about businesses, it is about the people who live and work here, the families who rely on these jobs, and the residents who are already struggling with the rising cost of living. We need revenue solution that are thoughtful, balanced, do not place undue burdens on either large employers or the everyday Washingtonian who is already feeling squeezed. I really urge our legislators to develop a balanced revenue measures that won't drive businesses and families from our estate. I'm sure they can find some approach that supports both our economy and our residents. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Newenhouse.
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to echo the great job by Janice, Katie, Evan, and Brianna. And this is exactly how I feel like when we've got these types of, you know, bills or legislation that, as I share with my colleagues, that are a clear and present danger to Bellevue, that we move at this pace and with this urgency. I completely agree with having a letter directly from the city of Bellevue as the second-largest economy in Washington State. I also agree with uniting with our, because we might be impacted the most. However, Kirkland, Redmond, et cetera, are gonna be just as dramatically impacted. So, you know, aligning with all other cities in King County or the state, whatever that approach looks like, makes complete sense to me. Absolutely against the BNO and the payroll. I'm not gonna belabor the points that have already been made, and they've all been excellent points. But, I mean, it's, and Janice made the, you know, the comment, this is kind of new, but it's been tried before. And it's been mentioned, I mean, we've been the beneficiaries of some of these bad policies in place. Amazon wouldn't have the presence here if Seattle didn't implement their jumpstart tax, which, by the way, Mayor Harold, I think it was today, saying that the revenues from that have dramatically dropped off after four years of implementation, right? So, it took a little while, however, those major employers are leaving. And it's not just Amazon, it's others as well. So, you know, I feel like, and the mayor, I thought, hit it right in terms of, you know, this is not about a revenue problem. Budget, the state has doubled in 10 years. This is about a spending problem, not a revenue problem. And while there might be some short-term positive impact, long-term, it's going to hurt us and hurt the state. So, I'm gonna move on to the property tax. I think the deputy mayor may have read my notes prior to this, because I had the same concern. And as good as that list was in terms of what, how we're viewing this, I think when you look at that property tax cap through the lens of housing, affordable housing, it is dramat-- I had a conversation with, and he said I could use his name, Mr. Hoffman, who reached out to me saying, "I'm not sure how much longer we can live in Bellevue. We are barely hanging on." These are seniors, but I think there's a lot of seniors that have been living in Bellevue, want to age in place, they've been living here 30, 40 years, and they are getting priced out. And one of the reasons is, is property taxes. And I'm very concerned about, especially the Senate version, where there is no cap, just the population growth and the inflation. So, literally, it could go up 5%, 6%, 7%, 8%, 9%. Ironically, at the exact same time right now, we're talking about rent control as well. So, what's a property owner supposed to do if property increases keep going up year after year, but yet they can't recover those costs, right? And then, on the other hand, it'll hurt the renter because all those costs are gonna be passed along to the renter. So, they might not be able to afford, it might become even a bigger issue in terms of being able to afford rent. And then, what's going to happen? Well, if you're a property owner, most likely then, you're gonna sell your property. You're not going to be able to make money being a property owner and renting out those units or that house, or whatever that looks like. So, that is of great concern to me, and that's why I'm strongly advocating that we add that, the property tax to the list of, or add it to the letter, I should say, with the BNO and the payroll. I think it's that great of a threat, and we've talked about, it's been our number one priority as a council, is addressing affordable housing, workforce housing, just housing in general. This will have a substantial negative impact on our ability to do that. So, you know, I think public services need adequate funding, absolutely, and good policy must balance that fairness and economic vitality. And slowing our economic engine reduces that tax base, and really, I feel undermines the very programs that we hope to strengthen. So, we can address education and infrastructure and social needs as we should, but we cannot hurt that tax base, as well as hurting people who want to be in Bellevue, who want to be in Washington State. And we need a more, I think, a more thoughtful approach. Root out any efficiencies, prioritize those core services, pursue those broad-based solutions that don't single out a few industries or a few individuals. We should be growing our tax base so that, you know, the existing rates generate more revenue, but not raising rates in ways that shrink that base. So, I hope that our legislators, especially in the 41st and the 48th, hear our concerns like this, and that we don't ignore the long-term economic health, the long-term job growth impact, and just the stability in general. These are very harmful policies, I believe. And I'm glad that as a council, we're talking about this tonight. I'm glad we're making this, you know, I believe, I know we haven't heard from everyone here, but I think we're pretty much in line in pushing back on this and really sending that clear signal that this will hurt Bellevue, short-term, long-term, hurt the residents that call this city home. You know, and Washington's vibrant economy is, you know, is no accident. I don't understand why we want to hurt ourselves that way. It's a blend of entrepreneurial spirit, it's the tech prowess, it's the educated workforce, and that has really powered our growth, and these proposals here would directly hurt that. So, we risk throwing away that just great economic growth by throwing sand in the gears with these proposals. So, I think we owe it to our residents, I think we owe it to our businesses that are here or want to come here, and future generations that want to live in Bellevue long-term, that don't want to have to take a job somewhere else, or leave the state, or seniors have to leave the state because they're no longer able to live here. So, again, very happy, we're talking about this tonight, and we're taking, hopefully, some really important action tonight to send a clear message about how the city council feels about these proposals. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stokes.
One of the advantages of being at more the end of the conversation is that on something like this, your colleagues have really played the thing all the way out. I mean, it's unbelievable, in a sense. And what they're doing, or what will happen because of the way they've set it up, and only at a certain rate is when you get caught to do this. You're putting, the cities, the state's gonna end up with just small businesses. They're gonna be, you know, the bigger companies are gonna have a problem, and it's really actually making choices of who gets taxed and who doesn't. And it's putting it all on the back of the large organizations without any concern or understanding of what it takes and what they can do, and the fact that if they want to not have to be tagged with this, as we've all said, and as clear as, they can go someplace else. It's just unbelievable that they've come up with this as a way to make it work. Now, you can have these arguments about whether we're, we want more money than we shouldn't have, and, you know, we're overtaxing. The question is, we're also in a huge debt also, and the city, it's not, and our system is not keeping up with the growth and the needs for funding. But this is like, probably the worst way to go funding at this stage. And then you have the governor going for a smaller budget. And if that goes through, or any of that part, then it's gonna be really a mess if this is enacted. So, this is, this is something that is, I just can't believe why they haven't figured out that larger companies who are taxed on this will go someplace else. The smaller companies who don't get taxed or not, they're gonna be here, but they're not gonna be, it's not gonna be the same state. I mean, it's just a mess. And so, I think, and it is one of these things, we have to put it in context and that this is something at the beginning, and these things go through and come out in different ways. But sometimes, we just wait to see what happens, and I'm really proud of the fact that we and others around us are saying, "No, this is not the way to do it. This is not healthy, it's not gonna work." It's gonna be, and given what's going on in the country, things are not just hunky-dory out there. And we're in great, we're in great shape comparatively to a lot of states and all the other places. But there are states around us that Amazon and others could go to very easily. So, I'm very proud of the fact that we're all together on this and that we're saying, "This is not the way to do it." This is not gonna accomplish anything good, and we'll end up with having less money because the smaller cities are not gonna be paying this, and others, we're gonna not be able to because the big companies leave. Five years from now, we may be sitting here with, you know, only a third or a half of the funding for the state than we have now. It's just, it's just kind of unbelievable that they're coming up with this and thinking this is something that's gonna be good for the state.
May I ask a clarifying question? You've spoken to the payroll, BNO and payroll tax, where are you on the property tax gap?
Well, same thing, I mean, I think it's, yeah.
That's fine.
It's all aligned the same way, it really is.
Well, I would say, Councilmember Hamilton and I have not spoken against the property tax.
Well, okay.
But we've heard Deputy Mayor and Councilmember Newenhouse speak against it. So, I just wanted to, it sounds like you also are opposed to that, so I just wanted to.
Well, I think the way it's going on, yeah, but on the other part, yes, very definitely.
Okay.
So, and I think it's just gonna hurt the state, and it's gonna hurt us, and we need to do something about it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Lee.
Well, it's amazing how much we're aligned on this topic. And I want to thank the staff, you know, you guys responded very quickly. And I think that, you know, you have also, and Brianna made a very good, good analysis, you know, on your proposal, looking and comparing, you know, all these issues, three bills. And so, you made your analysis. The only thing is, I agree with Deputy Mayor. He asked you about, you know, the slide 10 and 11. He said, "What's the guideline?" So, you know, he's talking about a particular guideline. And I think there's some comparison you made, some analysis you made, may have been based on certain guideline that we need to decide, we need to share. I think this is how the discussion has really come about. When they're just looking at, where do we get the most money? What's the impact? What's the impact on what? I mean, these are the guideline we need to be looking at. So, I really appreciate the discussion tonight. The discussion brought all these important things that we, City Bellevue, the region, the rest of the city, and the state of Washington. It affects all of us, all these, and the state of Washington, the legislatures making decisions that affect all these, and we are in the, right in the middle of it. And Bellevue is affected just as much as anybody else, maybe more. I mean, I'm not even gonna go there, we haven't made an analysis. Just based on what we think guidelines should be, we heard a lot. So, it's easy for me to kind of be talking at the end, because, you know, it's been addressed. And I'm really glad it's pointed out, we're not just talking about BNO, we're just not talking about head tax. Companies need to be fully protected because they, if they're not giving the fair equal treatment, they can walk, you know, they can operate, right? They have to survive, they have to be able to have fiscal ability to do it. The same thing, the same consideration applies individually, individuals, me, each of us. You know, applies to small businesses, small pop-up mall, you know? The individual who operates a coffee shop, it affects them all. Because if Amazon's not here to buy those products, where do they sell to? If Amazon doesn't have the employees here, if the environment is not, I don't even wanna say favorable, it's not friendly to them, if the environment's negative to them. We talk about positive impact, sure, you raise money, positive. I'd like to have more money, right? I'd like to eat steak every day. You know, everybody knows I like dessert, I like to eat dessert every day, but it's not good for me, right? Eating good is good, but depends on what you look at. So, we need to make sure that what we do has impact, and how does it impact us? We talk about, that's why we expect. So, I agree with all, some of the analysis, most of it you made, but you have not had some guidelines that we are concerned about, we are interested. some guidelines that we are concerned about, we are interested in, which is the little guys, average guys, people who live for a long time, the renters. We want to have people who can afford to live here, people can do business here. You know, we talk about today, you know, Janice and myself, and we are a city of immigrants. Immigrants came here, immigrants came to this country because they want to succeed. They want to have a better life, right? They want to make money. And if you don't allow them to make money and keep it, you tax every dollar they make, why do they come here? Where do they go? They're going to leave Washington State. Amazon's going to leave. In the big end, but in the small end, our neighbors going to leave. We'll pick up our tents and leave. Dave Hamblin said that, you're a small business person. So we've got to think about all that stuff. So that applies property tax as well. Because property tax is taxing out, taxing out us, out of where we live. I can't afford it. We are building homes for affordable housing for people who are on low income. How can they afford it? You have to pay the same tax. If you don't have to pay, where's the money coming from?
Okay.
You got to look at it.
Okay, no, this is good. I hear you.
You have to look at long term, short term. They're looking at short term, the state legislature. Oh, we, we need $17 billion. Let's feel it. Of course, but look at the impact. They forget about that. So if they do that, yes, we can give it to them, sure, for six months, a year, before Amazon moves out, but it's not sustainable. You know, after a year or two, if everyone's leaving here, leaving Bellevue, we're going to stop, just stop.
So I, I hear Councilmember opposed.
So it has to be sustainable.
To these three bills.
So, what I'm trying to say is, property tax is just as important.
Okay.
We cannot ignore it, okay? Doesn't matter what it is.
Let me stop you just for a minute. Councilmember Lee, thank you for your comments. I hear you.
I may have something else.
I know you might, and I think we all will. So in the letter as written, in the draft as written, you only talk about the payroll tax and the BNO tax. And in the joint letter that you drafted, I liked how you added, and other taxes, something affecting, threatening the economy, or something like that. And that would be a way to include the property tax cap. So.
Can I offer a couple of ideas?
Yeah.
So we could offer, we could expand that part of the Bellevue letter to say, to mention the payroll excise tax, the BNO, tax on large employers, and other economy threatening taxes. That would be one way to do that. There's a different thing that you could also consider, based on the conversation I'm hearing, because I do hear a kind of a range of things from you around the property tax. And this does go back, I'm going to go back to like slide six or something. There are some distinctions between the House and the Senate, and how they're approaching the property tax. And so I'm glad that Katie had the really good idea to make sure we called this out. One option that you could do if you wanted is we could make an addition to the letter that says, we, we know cities have been asking you to revisit the property tax cap for a long time. There's, there are ways we prefer, and there are ways that give us concerns. We're concerned, if, if this is the reflection of your, you know, collective opinion, we're concerned that there is no limit on the Senate-proposed lid lift, accommodating population and grow, excuse me, inflation and population growth. The House, of course, has a limitation, which is an upper limit of 3%. The Senate does have an expansion of the complete state property tax exemption for seniors and for those with a disability. And so one thing you could do is say, hey, if I may, you've got some of this right and some of this wrong. I really like that you are prioritizing exemptions for seniors and for people with disabilities. I like that the House puts an upper limit on this because I'm concerned about the impact to, you know, everyday folks who are paying property tax if there's no upper limit. And so we appreciate that you listened to cities who said, we do want a better expansion of this tool to keep pace with the services that pay for growth, but please try to keep it, you know, limited within a certain, inside a box.
I would like to suggest that the letter only address the BNO and payroll tax, and that we lobby for everything you just described, because we honestly haven't had a chance to discuss the, those subtleties in those two bills. And I think we probably agree with you, but I, to me, it just, it makes us look just so negative. And I would rather, you know, have the opportunity to lobby for what you described, and have that discussion amongst the council as to what that looks like. But I know we're pretty, we're very solid in wanting to send a letter opposing the, the payroll and the, and the, whatever, the BNO tax. And I would like to say that in that paragraph where you say, we believe that these bills may discourage larger companies, I always should say, you should say, will discourage larger companies from expanding their presence, because I think that's how strongly we feel. That's what I hear from the council tonight. So I would like just to kind of have us think about writing a letter about those two bills, and then addressing the property tax ones separately as.
We, we would feel fine with that approach. So the, adjusting the current draft letter to make it will discourage, we can certainly do that, that's easy. And then the other easy thing to add is other economy threatening taxes. You can add that in.
Which was in the joint letter.
That's right. Those would be easy to do, and then we can lobby the nuance and the tactics around the property tax.
Nuance, that's the word I couldn't say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm not finished yet.
Okay, hold on. Councilmember Lee, hold on for just a moment, please. Just to hold on for just a moment, please.
Everybody has a chance to talk.
Okay, Councilmember Lee, can you hold on for just a moment, please?
I'll hold on, but it's not fair.
Thank you.
Okay.
So I'd just like a head nod from the council on changing the word from may to will. And are you comfortable writing a letter that addresses the payroll and BNO taxes, and handling the property tax as a legislative agenda item that we lobby for?
I'm not that sorry.
I'm not seeing any head nods, so it's probably not clear. Okay, so we'll leave it. So I'm going to go back to you, Councilmember Lee, and let you finish, but please understand that that question is on the table, and if any, everybody can answer that question that I.
As far as I'm concerned, because that's, I'm still going through the first round.
I specifically asked a question that I would love to hear everybody answer when they get their turn.
You did. We haven't had a chance yet.
Go for it.
We're still talking about the first round, so let me finish. Thank you. You know, one thing that I want to emphasize, even the governor was saying, you know, we're not going to be looking at increasing revenue. Let's look at what can we do on spending, right? That's something that the legislature needs to hear. That's the legislature we need to be looking at, because that's a responsible thing to do. That's a sustainable thing to do. We're looking, we're looking at the issue of revenue and expense, so we can make the state, make the city, make the region competitive, sustainable environment to, to make us successful opportunities. That's what I'm talking about. So I believe we need to emphasize that. That includes all the taxes, including property tax. You know, we cannot single out one thing, to say, wow, is this the right thing to do at this moment? I'm talking about all the taxes have the same implications. We cannot treat one different from the other. And then, as we, as we do that, then we can decide, and have a council as a kind of conversation, what can we do? What can we do? What do we agree? Right now, we're not there, okay? We're just, I agree that we need to, what is important to me right now, which is very clear, I agree with the mayor, we may have some other, other considerations. I don't want to delay this. So I have to agree, let's tell the legislature, the head tax and BNO tax, not good, we definitely, no, it's going to impact us. But underneath all that, as Deputy Mayor showed, they all have consequences. Some of them may be just as important, maybe even not more than Amazon or big corporations. But we're not going to go there yet, because that's for sure. We know that. No controversy, okay? The others, maybe, but let's have a conversation, let's have a discussion. End of my speech. Thank you.
Okay, let's go, has everybody had a chance to speak? I think so. So let's start with Councilmember Hamilton, and do you want me to repeat what my question is? Okay, so the question is, are we supporting a letter from the city, as well as a joint letter from our surrounding cities as well, that we have looked at the draft? And I don't know if you want to print one out that everyone can see, or if everybody has been able to see the draft. There was just one, yeah, there was just one little change on that from a may to will. So are you good with that letter going out? And then, number two, can we address the property tax through our legislative agenda, and have a discussion on what we want to actually lobby for with that? So those, that's your question.
Definitely in favor of the letter. I, again, really appreciate this getting to us so quickly. I think it's important. So sending our own letter out, I think that makes a lot of sense. I think the joint letter and, you know, collaborating with our neighbors is also very important. I think, you know, it is pretty clear, there's consensus on the BNO tax and on the so-called head tax. I don't know if we were to take a vote on the property tax, if there was a tie, which is kind of my sense. Is a tie then a no, or a yes? So if we were to put the question before the council, do we want to include anything about the property tax? And if we had three for and three against?
You know what? I forgot that we added, we asked to add, were any other economy threatening taxes? That kind of references that and any other tax that they may come up with. So it's vague, but it's not specific no to the property tax that you're proposing. And there's the bill and the Senate, which are different, and Genesi was kind of saying, we may be okay with part of the bill, and we may be okay with part of the Senate, if they could combine those, but that's a conversation to have. So depending on how the motion is made is how a tie vote goes. So a tie vote is a yes vote.
Okay. So, I mean, I'm, in, I think the approach that you outlined, I'm perfectly fine with, but I, I wonder if maybe we should take an additional step and, and let everybody specifically weigh in on the tax, on the property tax part of it.
Okay, do we have enough information to do that? Sure. Okay, so what, weigh in. What's your thought? You've got your House bill?
I'm a no on BNO, no on head tax, and I'm in favor of the property tax lift.
Okay, all right. So I'm going to say that I am the same as you, but when it comes to the property tax, I like a hybrid of the two. And so, I have to remember what it was.
What do you mean by a hybrid of the two?
Well, we have a House bill and a Senate bill, and there, there's something from each of them that I like. And I'm trying to remember how you explained it. It made sense to me when you said it.
Mayor, the, what we were talking about was appreciating that the legislature has responded to Bellevue and other cities that have asked for flexibility on property tax cap to keep pace with growth, but expressing our both concern about the fact that there is no upper limit on the Senate version of the bill. There is an upper limit on the House side at 3%. And, and appreciating in the Senate side that there is expansion of the exemption for seniors and.
Oh, that's it.
Disabled individuals. So you could say, please work more on this to be thoughtful and careful.
Yeah, see, I hate putting that in this letter that is so decisive and powerfully worded, and then say, hey. So I'm going to say no to including the property tax, but to addressing it at a legislative lobbying level.
I agree with that.
Okay, thank you. That makes life easy, if you just say that. Deputy Mayor.
Can I ask you a question? The one that you are saying as a property tax that you advocated before, for the city has the flexibility to have that flexibility, that something crazy happened, we use that. This is, that is different than what the state is proposing. Am I right about that?
I will start the answer to that good question, and then I will look up at Brianna. So I'll tell you what I think it is, and then as soon as she starts to shake her head, I'll know that I'm getting it wrong. But I believe it is both. I think that they are both lifting the state property tax limit in those different ways, and they are giving other special districts and cities the ability to also lift above the 1%. Brianna, would you like to elaborate on that?
Yeah, that is correct. So local taxing districts would have the option to adjust to their property tax levy growth rate. In the Senate proposal, you'd have the option to do it with population growth, population growth plus inflation. And the House version, it would be population growth plus inflation capped at 3%. The Senate bill also has a requirement that if you're going to utilize that option, you have to find, issue a finding, that there's a need for public safety funding.
Great. Mayor, yes to the letter, yes to the word change to will. 100% would love to have property tax in the letter. It seems we don't have the unity on that. I think we need, this, eventually they are going to do some taxes. And I don't understand, do we have any not harming economic threatening tax? Do you guys know of that? What is, what is the opposite of economic threatening tax? And if we should know that, we should just let them do and just do that. So I think being vague doesn't do anything, because we are, basically we are saying, our individual resident, and again, I am really aligned with what was the original ask that city did, hey, just don't have a cap, because we know our need better, just make us be flexible. But not what is in those two bills. And I think we are sending a message that, yeah, whatever tab is, we are going to let individual pay that, or not even maybe business owners that has property, pay that from the pocket. So I really want to add that to, as strong as saying no to the payroll tag, as strong as saying no to BNO tax, say the same message that we don't want our individual. We talk about seniors and, what was the other people?
People with disability.
Disability. I think 60, 70% of our population are paycheck to paycheck. They work for tech companies, but we, if we think they have like five houses in some other cabins or location, we are wrong. They, is tax of increasing taxes for people who are already struggling of on day-to-day cost is not okay. I think we should stand and send a message. I'm sure at some point we should be okay with one tax, and because we should, we have, we need to have, give them an option, because if we say no to everything, then they just pick that for, they pick that themselves. I think these three, payroll, BNO, and property tax, I think is the criteria that I think I can stand against all of them, and we can, I can sign, I can be the support of that signature. But of course, if that's not the majority of the council, I am also okay to just say no to SP 5796 and HP 2045. Thank you, Mayor.
Did you answer if there are?
All of them.
No. Did you answer if there are any non-economy threatening taxes? Oh, boy, Evan, would you like to step into that? Thank you.
There are some that are smaller, that I would say are less economy, everyone has to pay for some type of tax, obviously. But there are some usage fees, those types of things that aren't strictly a tax, they are, you opt into usage. Those are the types of things, generally they are not large revenue generators, they are to offset or fully recover costs, so that's as close as you get in this realm. So that's as close as you get in this realm. But for major taxes like the ones that the state is considering, those will impact large populations and per our guiding principles. It's hopefully that the impact isn't disproportionately hitting any one sector, size of business, or group of individuals.
Is a property tax considered an economy-threatening tax?
I think in general, not as much. Because it is not specifically, it affects right commercial property tax owners, individual property tax owners. It is broad in application, and so I don't think it affects everyone. Fair?
Yeah, I think that's fair. I think with some of those questions, it is the opportu, it's the option to take additional property taxes. Body can decide to exercise that option or not. So that is something, whereas the payroll and BNO taxes are state-levered and would impact regardless of whether or not, this body would not have a decision in the matter. Whereas the property tax, you can use your discretion as to the facts on the ground in Bellevue to levy up to that additional 3% or beyond with those options. So the property tax provides a little bit more flexibility as well as more stability, which is helpful for levying against that money for, say, debt or other obligations.
Okay. Thank you.
It seems like we need to not have those two join at this point.
That's how I feel, but I'm going to let Councilmember Newenhouse tell us what he thinks.
Okay. Because they are. So if I remember what we're talking about now, so I think I already said yes in the letter, yes on unity with other cities. I absolutely, you know, on the BNO and what was the other one now? Now I forget. Thank you. On the payroll taxes, absolutely. But I adamantly feel that we need to add the property taxes to that. I feel like that is every bit as dangerous or a threat to the residents and businesses of the city. Again, I'll reiterate that this is going to force working-class families in our city. It's going to force seniors, maybe not as much if it's the House versus the Senate bill. This is going to force people out of their homes in our city. I don't see how we can say that's not going to impact everybody. From a business side, maybe a little bit different, but it's going to be impactful to everybody for the, what I mentioned before. Property taxes go up. That is going to be passed along to renters. There's going to be less inventory, less housing, more expensive housing, and a lot of that existing housing that is there, it will be sold off. And if this council is really committed, which I believe we are, to increasing housing options and not doing anything detrimental that could hurt housing options, I don't understand why we can't get this property tax in this letter as well. I would be against having the very soft language. I like how specific we are on the first two, and I would advocate strongly that we add the third being this property tax. Thank you.
Yeah, let me just clarify one thing. The property taxes proposed from the House and the Senate, that's not imposed upon our city, our residents. That gives us the option to impose it. Is that true or?
No, it is.
It is imposed.
There's an increase or a lift to the state property tax, and it also gives us the option to then increase our local share.
It's a both.
It is both.
Ew. Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Stokes, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I'm tending to agree with Councilmember Newenhouse. We could do it both ways, and there's, we want to make sure that we really are concentrated on the other big, big piece, but what he's, what he's saying, what we talked about this is the property tax itself is on top of the other stuff, is going to have real impact. So the real impact that we want to not have is both taxes. And we need to put it together, like the whole thing is putting new, all these, having new taxes on now is not a good idea. I mean, it's just, it could really change Washington State and certainly could really change cities like us around us. And I think it, I think we can set it up in a way so we don't lose either one, if they're in there, but it's a, you put all those together, they do both of those, and that is, that is really going to make a big change. And so I think we need to emphasize that and say, what in the hell are you doing? You could not do that. You can say, what in the heck? Okay. But I think, yeah, I think that would be very powerful to say, gotta wait a minute. And we know that we, that, and the governor's thing is interesting in this because he's pushing for a lower budget and things. And it's, I don't know. So I think this is the strongest thing we could do, and I think we just say, we, in a good way, how we, we like, we pay our taxes, we don't want to have funds, we want the city and the state to be able to do things, but this is just way overboard. This is not healthy.
So you're yes to the letter from the city, yes to a joint letter, yes to all three?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Lee, thank you for your patience.
Okay. Thank you. Whatever impact big corporations like Amazon impact individuals, people who work here, who live here. Amazon doesn't want to have a benefit, doesn't want to have a fair tax if nobody works for them because they're not here. They're all gone. People can walk their feet. They live here because they think this place is fair to them. They can afford to pay the property taxes. Property tax is the thing that affect them most directly, you know? So we need to have fair treatment to everybody. That's why we have a democracy. Politics is local, it's individuals. That's why all these people come to city council meetings. Otherwise, we don't need these guys. We'll just make sure the government works, make sure that Amazon's doing well, and you guys, we don't need you. No, we need them. If they're not here, they don't need us. So it's important. Whatever impacts Amazon, whatever make them hurt, whatever makes them well, does the same thing with, to the employees. Or, no, I mean, the employees feel the same way, same way. And therefore, contented, happy employees, we have contented, happy companies and happy employers. Contented residents, contented citizens, we have contented, happy government. Okay? So let's figure it out. So when we respond to the legislature, the Senate bill, I don't remember the number, we cannot say, well, we like the property tax. Because whatever we have talked about, we talk about the challenge, the problem with property tax. We need to be clear in that. We cannot say one thing with one side of mouths, well, we don't want to have property tax, but we think it's okay, you can do it this way. No. We have to explain why. Okay? And then hopefully, they see it, they understand it, and we can stand behind it. And the people will be the beneficiary of it. Okay? If the people are beneficiary, the community will be beneficiary, the government will be beneficiary, the big company will be beneficiary. We will continue to attract people to come to Washington State. If we don't, people will leave. We don't need us here. That's what I want to do. So I would like to, for sure, agree with Deputy Mayor and Jared to include that, clearly explaining, not double-talking, not being soft, but clear, state why, impact, negative, positive, long-term, short-term.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to ask for two motions because I want to vote differently on one of them. So let's hear the first one.
First motion. I move to direct staff to articulate the city position on proposed revenue strategies, including saying no to payroll tax and saying no to BNO tax. That's the first motion raised.
Second.
All in favor?
I have a question.
Yes, of course.
So we're just voting for the letter?
Just with those two items?
And the next motion will be to include?
All three.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The next one, the next motion would be to add the other part.
Oh, to add that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Why can't we?
I'd like to make two separate motions.
Yeah.
We are making two separate motions.
Independent motions.
We have a motion on the table that has been seconded, and so if you want to make a substitute motion, I guess, what would your?
We would like to make a substitute motion.
Councilmember Lee, you have to articulate the substitute, and we'll need a second.
We would like to send a letter, drive a letter to the state legislature opposing BNO tax and the head tax, yeah, as well as the property tax. For the reasons we articulate, and they are the same reason.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
Second.
What?
It's not very collegial of you, to be honest, you guys, but anyway. All right. Who would like to include, substitute that motion for the one that was originally made and seconded? All those in favor for including all three in one letter, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say no.
I have a question. I'm sorry, but I'm, I'm just, I would like to hear the motion again, please. I'm just getting a little confused.
It is confusing. So I'll tell you, we first had a motion to just include the payroll taxes and the BNO tax, and then we were going to have a motion whether or not to add into that the property tax cap. But they decided that instead of honoring that motion, they wanted to replace it with just all three in the motion so that I don't get a chance to say why I'm for it or not for the one thing. So I have to vote against the whole thing, whether I want to or not.
Parliamentary, what do you think?
Please.
There is a motion. Oh, I'm just asking. Question.
There currently is a substitute motion on the table that has been seconded, and we were in the middle of voting.
And if we don't vote for the substitute motion, we go back to the first motion, which is yes, include the property tax, I mean, the payroll, payroll tax and the BNO tax, and then we'll have a second motion to ask if we want to add into that the property tax. And that gives me a chance to vote for a part of it and vote against another part and say why, which would be, I would appreciate.
And just for another clarification, Mayor, please. So if we were to do it as you described, and that was the plan moments ago before the substitute motion, when we vote on the property tax motion, whether or not to include that, we would be, because we could include it favorably or we could include it negatively, and that'll be a part of the vote as well, as you kind of had it organized.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Could you repeat it again, please, so we know what we're voting on?
Okay. What we're voting on, what, we made an original motion to have a letter that would talking against?
What's the current motion on the table?
Let me explain. We have two motions on the table right now, so I'm going to explain what they are.
With two motions on the table?
Okay.
Parliamentary.
We go with the first vote first.
I'm like losing my patience here right now.
Councilmember Lee, you're the one who offered the substitute motion.
No, no, I'm just clarifying it. I, I'm not sure. We have.
Okay, let me speak then, and I will make it clear to you. We have a motion on the table that was offered by the deputy mayor to write a letter in opposition to the payroll tax and the BNO tax. We were then going to, he was then going to make a second motion to ask whether or not to add the opposition to the property tax cap. You decided to make a substitute motion that included all three of those without giving a chance to vote on them separately.
Clarification. So the second motion is including the first motion. Pass the first one, and then second one, second motion will be to include?
Right.
Okay, so it's one motion or two motions?
It's two motions.
Please.
Okay.
Clarify.
The substitute motion, that is independent of the main motion. It's an amendment.
Can you let her?
The one that, the one the mayor made initially, what's that motion?
The deputy mayor made one of two motions.
I want the parliamentary person to say.
So I don't have that motion in front of me. What I was able to get from the original was move to articulate the property revenue strategies, including no to the payroll tax and no to the BNO tax.
Yes, right.
That's one of two motions.
That's it?
That was the main motion.
That's the one we're acting on now?
No.
Go ahead.
You then offered a substitute motion, which was seconded.
Yes.
Whether or not the council wants to entertain that substitute motion is what is currently on the table right now, on the floor right now for voting.
That's it. It does not say anything about doing the second motion you talk about, Lee. Include, see, she's saying, go ahead.
I think because you, you offered the substitute. We were going to do the second motion to add the property tax, but because you were ahead of us and you offered a substitute, we were not able to add that.
We'll still get to the motion to add property tax.
So the way to do it, shall we?
Can I ask you to drop your substitute motion?
No, we'll vote my motion down.
Yeah, great.
That's it.
Great.
Then you do the second motion.
Done.
That's the way to do it.
All those in favor of the substitute motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay. So we're, what's on the table and what has been seconded is the first motion, which was to write the letter in opposition to the head tax and the BNO tax. And it's been seconded, so all in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The second motion.
I move to direct staff to articulate the city position on proposed revenue strategy. This one is saying no to the property tax.
Second.
Okay. I would like to discuss this for a moment and give my opinion. I don't feel like we have really thought about how this could be a plus for the city. I mean, our kids are the most important thing in their education, and we know that our schools are underfunded. And I don't know if this is the best way to get funding for schools or not, but I would like to have the conversation, and I would like to look at the Senate bill, including a cap of the 3% year-over-year. And so for that reason, I don't want to just put no to this in that letter. So that's just my opinion. Does anybody else have a comment or a thought on that? If not, we'll just go ahead and vote. Okay. All in favor of including the property tax cap, opposition, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Okay. So I think it's just me opposed, right? Oh, and you as well. Okay, so two, okay, good. Thank you. I appreciate giving me the opportunity to discuss that. Okay. I believe we are done. Did you get everything you need from us?
Yes, I think that we did. We will work on some language to make that addition to the letter. Yep. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I think we are adjourned.